Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Carrie Martnek. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I just want to make a few announcements here. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to be the live stream in this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. To confirm, members or persons participating in the agenda are remotely present, please state the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Pretzky?
Here.
Bill Pierce?
Here.
Anthony Zeigman?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Yeah.
Great. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Here.
Great. Ground rules for the meeting. For presenters and applicants on the agenda, the Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board will be conducted by roll call vote. After our members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. By phone dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Please note party or number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes for any comments. So with that, why don't we get started with the first item on our agenda? I'd like to welcome Judy Barrett and Lauren Lind to present on MBTA Multi-Family Zoning Discussion. Welcome. Oh, Judy, we can't hear you there.
Turned it off, so I wouldn't interrupt you, and then I forgot to turn it back on. So it's nice to see everyone again. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I've worked off and on in Northborough since two thousand and three, when the community development plan was done. So it's always nice to come back. Lauren is joining me for this project. She's done an awful lot of work trying to come up with an assessment of potential opportunities, working with Laurie. For the town to consider on this new law, which I think you're probably all familiar with, but we're going to kind of walk you through the latest and greatest about the law, some of which you may be familiar with, but I think we'd just like to make sure everybody has accurate information. And then we can kind of zoom in on Northborough. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to you, Lauren, and I hope you have screen share permission.
I do. Thank you. I'm going to start sharing my screen. If you could all confirm if you can see the slide there for me?
There it is.
Okay, great. Right, I'm going to be getting started again. My name is Lauren Lind. I'm a Senior Planner with Barrett Planning Group. It's nice to be here tonight. Thank you for your time and attention. So tonight, we're going to review. We're going to overview the MBTA Communities Law, understand what the compliance guidelines mean, some of the basics, opportunities and limitations that we've encountered. We'll walk you through the compliance model and take a closer look at Northborough and some relevant parcels, and we will have time for dedicated questions at the end. So first to start, the MBTA Communities Law, this, again, for the Board, I know you've had some information about this, but for the general public, we like to lay this out as framework. The multi-family zoning requirement for MBTA communities is a, under Chapter forty-eight, Section three A of the state law. It's a portion of the Housing Choice Initiative, which was a state economic development bill introduced in two thousand and twenty-one. It does require MBTA communities to have at least one zoning district in which multifamily housing is permitted by right and meets a list of other criteria. And failure to comply makes a community ineligible for certain state funds and other penalties. We'll get more into the details on that later. So to discuss what makes an MBTA community, an MBTA community, it is really any of the original fourteen that hosted MBTA Transit Service, or any of the fifty-one that have since joined to host system service. It also includes the sixty, uh, communities abutting, the sixty-five communities that host the service, as well as any that have adopted a ballot question to be considered for future service expansions. The law does have requirements, and it does require different categories for each of the service types. There are four groups of categorization that we'll get into. And for all of these communities, there are regulations that which they have to comply with that established by the Department of Housing and Community Development. The basics of the law, it requires multifamily as of right, which in essence, you can't require a special permit or an overly cumbersome permitting process. It's similar to, if you think about walking into a building department today and getting a single-family home, that is something that is as of right that we consider. So it's considering multifamily as of right. There's a minimum gross density requirement of fifteen units per acre. And it has to be housing that's suitable for families with children, meaning that there can be no age restrictions. You can't place limits on the number, size of bedrooms, and you cannot limit number of occupants. In all areas where it's applicable and possible, the state would like to see development within a half a mile of a transit station. And they're looking for districts to be of a reasonable size, which we'll get more into the criteria and what that means later. The noncompliance makes you ineligible for, right now, it's three particular grant programs that have been called out. And that includes the Community One Stop for Growth, which has sort of become an umbrella grant organization to encompass mass works, along with a couple of other infrastructure and planning grant programs. It also includes the Housing Choice Initiative and the Local Capital Projects Fund. And most importantly, as of March fifteenth, there's been a statement released by the State Attorney General's Office that implicates that noncompliance can result in fair housing law violations on the federal and state level. The law does not require new housing development. It's really actually, it's not measured by development, it's by zoned capacity, and we'll get more into that concept later. It does not require that communities pay for the infrastructure needed to unlock this development in these districts. It does not override the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection, Protection Act or Title V requirements through the State Environmental Code. And it does not prohibit communities with options for waivers or exemptions from the law. As I mentioned earlier, DHCD is responsible for determining the guidelines for communities to become compliant. They are working towards trying to create a fair and reasonable way for communities to do this by coordinating technical assistance, funding programs across different state agencies and, you know, consultants and communities looking to do these activities. The majority of the deadlines for the communities are December of two thousand and twenty-four, so the intention was that there would be time to plan, and particularly for towns, to go through a town meeting cycle to adopt zoning. Well, now take a look more at the compliance guidelines. As I mentioned, depending on your category of community, your deadline may be different. The vast majority of communities will fall into that December two thousand and twenty-four category, particularly for the town of Northborough. You are an adjacent community, so you're looking at that December, end of calendar year, two thousand and twenty-four deadline for adoption of compliant zoning. So we'll take a look again at what makes a, a potential district. When we talk about reasonable size, sort of blanket criteria that you're looking at for most communities is that it's a minimum acre of fifty acres, a minimum gross density on fifteen units per acre. This is important that it's based on developable land only. And there is a minimum unit capacity that you're going to see very sort of drastically, depending on the community size. There is percentages that they're looking for for each community type, but depending on your land area calculations and your developable land, there is a lot of caveats that you'll see. When we talk about area and location, it really is the lesser of either fifty acres or one point five percent of the community's developable land, except in adjacent small towns where there are no minimum requirements. All of the, at least half the district of the acres must be contiguous parcels, meaning the state does not want to see you carving out islands, if you will, of pieces here and there. They want to see some sort of continuousness. And again, they're really looking for this to be near transit area as much as possible. If you can have a contiguous area, different pieces, but there has to be a minimum of five acres. So again, they're really making sure you're not carving out tiny islands. When we talk about access, area location for Northborough in particular, since you're an adjacent community, you're looking at zero percent since there is no transit station area that you need to be required. But as you look through other communities, that will change based on your community parameters. The multifamily units for adjacent communities is ten percent, and there is a minimum requirement of seven hundred and fifty, however. So you may see in different communities, you know, that you may have a higher percentage of what you're being required to do. But there is a cap at twenty-five percent that in no matter what scenario, it's sort of a circuit breaker, if you will, that no community will be asked to go above and beyond twenty-five percent of their existing housing stock. When we talk about calculating gross density, we're looking at the number of residential units per acre of land. And this formula takes into calculation that excluded land, so that you're really basing your calculation and gross density on developable land that is realistically feasible. Excluded land, there's a big difference here. There's excluded land versus sensitive land. Excluded land is areas that is not considered available. It is removed from your area calculations. This includes things like water resources, wetlands and water bodies, publicly owned land, except those that are slated for development, and we can get more into those details later. It does not include rights of way, Title V wetland setbacks, the one hundred-year floodplain, protected land. And when we think about that conservation land, particularly those with conservation restrictions and perpetuity, those are considered excluded land. And then anything that's institutional, hospitals, universities, prisons, public utilities. Sensitive land, on the other hand, are things that may be excluded, but there's a lot more gray area here, and you may be able to include sensitive land depending on the scenario and the site characteristics. These include things like buffer zones, habitat areas, soil and different, you know, makeup of the, the land there, and then areas that are prone to flooding but outside of the exact floodplain. I'm going to revisit the concept of zone capacity. So the, as I mentioned earlier, the, the law is not concerned with the production of units, it's the zone capacity. So this is a hypothetical unit yield based on the district regulations. It's accounting the number of units that could potentially be permitted across the district by right. It is not a mandate to actually construct them, and it's not concerned with existing units on the ground. It also does not, uh, it's not able to take into consideration different regulations like the Wetlands Protection Act and Title V. So the figure on your right, I like to explain to people, it really doesn't matter what's on the lot today, whether it's a vacant land, a single-family home, or a large multifamily density structure. What matters is the zoning there. So you really have to think of this as, you know, a gray slate. It's sort of irrelevant what's there today. It's what the zoning would allow to unlock in the future if you were to theoretically redevelop that parcel under this new zoning. Some more about opportunities and limitations of the guideline. You, as I mentioned earlier, you can't require a special permit. You can subject a site plan review, but it's really important that you're not using site plan review to deny a project that would be allowed as a right by imposing conditions that would make it infeasible or impractical to proceed. Site plan review, you're really looking at things such as circulation, vehicular and emergency access, how pedestrians move about that site. You can take a look at the exterior buildings, particularly if you want to go as far as, I'm sorry, if you want to go as far as design guidelines, it's something that you can take a look at. That would be to accompany your bylaws. And you can look at screening of adjacent properties, but you really can't impose a regulation just because you don't like a project to, to, that it wouldn't proceed. Communities are prohibited from requiring mixed-use development. For example, a lot of communities that we've spoken to want to require ground floor commercial space with upper-story multifamily units, as one might typically see in a mixed-use, you know, downtown, for example. The, while you can't require that under this zoning, we have found that you can sort of have two scenarios in which you have zoning that would allow multifamily by right, and you can then incentivize commercial use on the ground floor space with perhaps a density bonus or some other type of zoning criteria. So there's options around this, but just to know that, you know, that can't be a requirement of your zoning if you want to achieve compliance. Communities may require up to ten percent affordable units in their development. And that's, you know, without question. If you want to go to a higher level of affordability, you can do so as long as you have proof through a market study that it does not impede multifamily development in your neighborhood. The affordability levels are not limited to forty B income limits, where you might think about your typical eighty percent area mean income. You can go up to a hundred percent, which is, you're getting more into sort of the workforce housing of affordability at that point. And then for, you know, I don't believe Northborough has a, has a forty R. Correct me if I'm wrong. So the forty R, you know, there's, there's been some question about, the forty R program used to have a twenty-five percent affordability. There's some sort of questions as to how that may tie into this new law, but for you guys, I'm going to skip it since it's not really relevant. Now we're going to talk about the compliance model. The compliance model is an Excel-based model that works with export, exported data from geographic information systems. So if you think about your online mapping systems, it's sort of an open source state program that we use. You run it through this Excel model, and then you can calculate different sorts of yield of, of a district based on the parameters that you put into the model. So you use the model to say what your minimum lot size is, what type of parking you want, your percentage requirements of open space and lot coverage, things like that. And then that will help you identify zoning scenarios to understand whether you're meeting that compliance or not. The model doesn't see sort of a large blanket block like the example analysis you'll see here. It sees parcel-by-parcel analysis. So really, it's going to take the parcel-by-parcel analysis and make sure on average that you're meeting that density unit. When you put the zoning into the model, it will automatically pull out things like non-conforming parcels, because as of right, typically, you're not able to develop on that lot. So it will just not calculate any yield there if it's anticipating that it would trigger a special permit process. Things to include, you know, sometimes on paper, you might see a district like you see on the left, where there's some large parcels that you could, might think would be suitable for multifamily. But then, once you filter in the excluded land, then you're realizing that it may not be the best suitable area. Not to mention that, once you factor in the wetlands here, you then would likely end up with a very low yield and not meet the density requirements that you would need to in this type of a district. You can introduce things like sub-districts. This can be districts that are under your whole district with slightly differing areas. One of the examples we like to give is density. For example, if you wanted to have a lower density fronting the street and then graduate back to a higher concentration density in the central of a district, you can do that so long as you are making sure that you're averaging out to that fifteen units per acre. So there is a little bit given pull with that. The non-continuous districts, at least half of your total districts must be contiguous. And then for each sort of sub-satellite district that you might think of, it has to be a minimum of five acres. So you, you have to make sure that you're not carving out these tiny parcels. Now we're going to take a closer look at Northborough and how this impacts you. So as I mentioned earlier, this is an adjacent community. The two thousand and twenty housing unit count based on the DHCD's data that they're pulling is five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven. So those are the, that's the number that they're using to use their calculations. You do have a minimum unit capacity of seven hundred and fifty and a district size of fifty acres with the standard gross density of fifteen units per acre. And as you're an adjacent community, there's no station area to be worrying about. The community is working with Massachusetts Housing Partnership through a technical assistance program in partnership with Barrett Planning Group on this phase one timeline for your three A technical assistance. Right now, you're looking at sort of the chart of where we are. We're sort of in the mid to March, April here. We're meeting with the town staff and planning board, and hopefully working our way towards identifying up to two districts. So we'll be working with you at least for the foreseeable end of the fiscal year, and then potentially working with you to craft some zoning if, if and when the time comes. I want to take a step to look at a tool that we've been using, and it's very helpful, but it's important to understand that this tool, it's residency by MHP. It's really a good tool for looking at comparable options and getting a, an idea of what density is out there. But there is some caveats to this in that there's sometimes incomplete data sets. There may be, you know, data incorrections. Some of you may have seen actually an earlier version of this PowerPoint slide that was based on residency that had an incorrect data point. And once we were able to correct for that, you sort of see a different picture. So it's, it's always important to use this as a tool, but do not rely totally on this for your compliance. And then I always recommend, you know, cross-checking with your own assessor database records to make sure that what is feeding into the tool is actually consistent with what's, you know, on the books in your town. So using residency, I was able to gather a few examples of where residential density exists, both in your town and in a nearby community. Taking a look at two residential districts that exist right now, you have the Oakwood Terrace Residences located at twenty-two South Cut Off. That's eleven units on a point-six-five acre parcel, which gets you to just over sixteen units per acre. So this level of density, for example, could be something that could be feasible to meet that fifteen minimum units per acre that you have. Again, the residents at the Fells Way, at the Falls, I'm sorry. Forty-one units on one point six acres, it's, you're well above fifteen percent. So these are examples that you already have in your community that you can point to when you think about this density, to think about what you might introduce. Another example that we had, but we wanted to give you a mixed-use example that was in a nearby community. So if anyone's familiar with the New City Micro Creamery Building, it's over in Hudson. It's right near the Rotary. That building is a mixed-use building, first floor commercial, and then there's residential apart. That is over, you know, over thirty, thirty units per acre in density. So this is a local example I thought you might find helpful to think about if you want to, you know, because there's opportunities here to do this, whether it's solely residential, or if you're looking for areas that you would find a mixed-use development to be more appropriate, then there's ways to go about doing this, and this is a real-life example. We took a closer look at two sites to begin to start to test the compliance model on them. We used the Avalon Northborough Parcel, which has already three hundred and eighty-two units existing under a forty B development. We also used thirty-three, three thirty-three Southwest Cut Off, which as we've been informed, there's a potential proposal by Trammell Crowe for three hundred and fifteen residential units there. Using the model, we took a look at, we largely based this on Northborough's existing downtown neighborhood district zoning with a lot size of five thousand five hundred square feet with an additional four thousand five hundred per additional dwelling unit. That's based on your minimal lot size. We maintained the height under the existing underlying district zoning of sixty feet of the industrial parcels that we used as examples. And that reason is that you would have at sixty feet potential for up to three stories. The maximum lot coverage and the minimum open space came from the downtown neighborhood districts to family and multifamily requirements, same as the setbacks and parking spaces. Using those two parcels, we were able to test these, and as you can see, you know, you're, you're well exceeding your, your minimum seven hundred and fifty unit capacity there if you were to enact this type of zoning on those parcels. With that said, I do want to flag two major things for you. And, and that is potential concerns. First is the special permit that you have in the Water Protection District. That is something that we find that potentially DHCD may have an issue with. So we can discuss more about sort of workarounds if you wanted to proceed with that. And then the next thing, most importantly, is we've been made aware that there's a development agreement in place with the Avalon Development. The concern there is that if the existing development is capped at three hundred and eighty-two units, which it is right now, the, the density per unit works out to be just under ten. It's about nine units per acre. That's, we're just concerned that if we were to proceed with putting zoning in place with that development agreement still in place, that it could be considered excluded lands such that, you know, if you had a conservation restriction in place that would preclude potential zoning or potential development of that. We are concerned that DHCD may look at this sort of development agreement that caps a maximum amount of units on the site as a similar sort of restriction. So that is something to be aware of, you know, that we can continue to discuss. Uh, I'll stop sharing my screen in a moment because we're almost done here, but I just wanted to point you to two more sources of information. The MassGov website on multifamily zoning requirements for MBTA communities, there's a lot of information there. You can access directly the regulations if you really want to get into the weeds of it. And then I've also given you a link to the March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three advisory memo that came out from the Massachusetts Office of the Attorney General that discusses that sort of potential for fair housing violations under the federal and state government for noncompliance. So I'll stop for questions right now. I'm sure there's a lot, a lot more to be discussed, but if I, I'll turn it back to Carrie for now, and please let us know where you want to start.
Sure. Thank you, Lauren. That was great. I appreciate you're such a fast talker as well. That's fantastic. Um, any questions from the Board at this time?
Um, I, I have a question. When you talk about density and units, density really isn't population, is it? I mean, if you had fifty single bedroom units that, that meet density, but not really the intended
So you can't limit the number of bedrooms in the unit, so it's number of units per acre, not population.
So what about, that's my question.
Oh, okay. So along those lines, if it's not in the bylaw that it's limited, but the developer happens to propose it a certain way, that's not our problem. Okay.
That's the developer's choice. What you can't do is impose requirement on the developer to, to essentially scope out the kind of project they're going to build. It's just the density.
Right. Other questions?
Yeah, I have one. So what's never been entirely clear to me is Avalon. And it was early on, I was under the impression we could actually use some existing higher-density dwellings into the equation. Is it all, is it all going to be net new? Meaning, if we think of Avalon, we'd have to build new units on that, or they would, somebody would have to build new units on that property. Is there any existing property within town that we could leverage and say, well, we've already done this much here, so we have to do, you know, we didn't have to, we don't have to do the total amount, but we have to do additive.
So whatever you already have does not count, if you will.
Okay.
Matters is, wherever you create these districts, the sum of the development capacity within them has to reach that seven hundred and fifty unit minimum target and available to, for development at fifteen units an acre.
Okay.
That's the, it's not about counting whether units ever get built, which I know is a little weird about this law, but that's the reality of it. It's, is the zone's capacity there.
Right. So it's, so net new seven fifty, and we just, it just has to be the ability for somebody to do it. Doesn't ever mean they have to do it, just that we have to. Yep, I got you.
You have to be able to show that that is actually the case. So what Lauren was referring to about the Avalon project is simply where there is an existing development agreement that kind of controls how much is available, can be built on that site. We just want you to know DHCD is probably going to look at that and may determine that that is a constraint that overrides any zoning that says fifteen units an acre. So we are going to consult with them about this and try to get a read from them about how they are, are they responding to those kinds of development agreements. But for now, I, we're not really comfortable saying it's not going to count, but we do want you to be aware that there's a potential issue. I think the bigger constraint for you folks is the Water Resource Protection District, because if you have a special permit requirement in an overlay district that is going to collide, if you will, with the as-of-right intent of fifteen units an acre, that may be a problem. And again, we're going to kind of look into this with DHCD.
What if the special permit's already been granted for that area?
So someone who wants to develop fifteen units an acre wants to come to you, the Planning Board, with a site plan to develop fifteen units an acre. They have to be able to do that without then requesting a special permit.
Okay, so even if a special permit's been granted for the land already?
What's already there, it doesn't matter. What matters is if I want to come to you and build something at fifteen units an acre, I have to be able to kind of go through that permitting process as a right without being encumbered by anything else in the bylaw that might trigger a special permit. That's the
So what about property, sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Anthony.
So let's say, for example, a property like Kimball, if you're familiar with Kimball, the quarry over by Wegmans.
Oh, yeah.
Great. So, you know, I know at some point they want, once they get down to the road level, they want to develop that to some extent. Whatever they do, you know, no. If we were to make that part of the plan, not knowing what their plan is, would that apply to the goals or the numbers? Meaning, they could, they may say, well, we're just going to build commercial here, whatever. But not knowing what they're going to do.
That's, and, and what they're going to do, who knows? You know, it's really up to you as a town to say, these are areas that we think are appropriate to zone for fifteen units an acre. And if it happens to be, you know, land that's adjacent to a commercial project, and maybe, you know, maybe the owner's going to do some commercial development on it. We don't know. You don't know. That slide Lauren showed earlier about kind of doesn't matter what's on the site now, it's, it's what it could be. That's what matters.
Okay.
And the current thing you showed for Avalon, we already have, is, does that mean we already have forty acres covered, or we don't already have forty acres covered?
No, because the zoning, the underlying zoning is not there yet.
But if we did do, if we switched the zoning there, would we have forty acres right there with Avalon alone, or not necessarily?
Potentially, the only concern is that DHCD will look at that development agreement on that site and say, this is, you know, if it's, if it's, you know, running with the land, for example, or whatever the parameters may be, DHCD may look at that and consider it comparable to a conservation restriction to make that zoning infeasible.
Okay, so that's the part where we need to further scope.
We, we need some, we need to get their hand on this, and we don't know what they're going to say.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt. The other thing to just add to Anthony's point was, for example, you, you mentioned the quarry parcel. The zoning doesn't have to change underlying zoning. You can introduce this as an overlay. So you can leave these parcels with multiple options for zoning that they want to do. It's just, you know, if you at, at least allow the zoning to unlock that potential development, then you have met the requirements.
Great.
Got you.
Millie, you have something? I do, because to clarify on that point, so what we, what we say could be the scenario and what actually does happen are, could be two different things, correct? And we would not get penalized if, let's say, that whole parcel doesn't become high-density units.
If you make that
Then do, then do we have to find other pieces that meet our, okay.
It's not reduction. It's about zoned capacity. Do you agree that someone could build fifteen units an acre? And if they choose instead to build a popcorn factory, that's up to them.
Okay. Um, Lori, where Kimball's is right now? Is that industrial? Is that zoned industrial, the underlying? Yeah, Fred, I see. And we've been talking about doing a commercial overlay there. So I don't, can we do multiple overlays on an area?
There already is a commercial overlay.
Oh, there is. Okay. All right. Why did I think we were trying to put a commercial overlay there? Now I can't remember.
I think it's called Major, uh.
No, no, that ends it. Oh, so that's the delineation. We don't know what that delineation is. I guess the Wegmans, um, the Northborough Crossing. The, the major, I know what you mean, the business overlay. Where does that end?
Yes, it's major commercial development overlay district. And it is, uh, the, the industrial district that's at the town line of, of Shrewsbury and Westboro.
Mm-hmm.
So it's on Route twenty. So that includes that area.
Okay. So we can have multiple overlays in one district?
As long as one does not prevent the fifteen unit an acre overlay from operating independently of all the others.
Okay.
That's the issue with the groundwater protection district. That's an overlay. It requires a special permit for development at the level we're talking about. So that would that would override from a zoning perspective, a district that allows fifteen units an acre as of right, unless you specifically write into that district, the Water Resource Protection District shall not apply.
Hmm.
Yeah, just that's why you have to sort of think about how you write the overlay. So it's very clear that the fifteen unit an acre one isn't, um, isn't superseded, if you will, by something else.
And I'm sorry, I gotta correct myself. I said the, the industrial district was purple. It's not. It's the pink area at the corner.
Any other questions from the board or staff? Any questions, Lori or Fred?
I, I have a couple of questions, just as far as the, the whole point of the MBTA communities is to give people access to the, uh, public transportation system, correct?
That's one of the purposes.
Okay. Um, and I, I guess I'm just curious as to how has the commuter traffic changed since COVID? Um, how has that been affected? No, more, less?
It, it's, I, it's a good question, but it's not relevant to this.
Okay.
Is, are you identified in the MBTA statute as an MBTA community? Either because you have rapid transit, because you have train, because you're adjacent, or for some other reason, you have petitioned to be part of the area. Those, those classes of communities, that's how we get to the hundred and seventy-five that are subject to this law. That's all that matters. Whatever's happening with commuter rail, I mean, this is all coming up in other communities, like why doesn't the MBTA fix their service? We all agree that, that it's irrelevant to this, this particular law.
That, that was my next point is that, yeah, well, okay. The other irrelevant thing is they want to look for housing that's more affordable for people, but this doesn't have to be affordable. So it's not even helping that really.
Yeah, although I do think in fairness, Amy, I think most towns are going to have some inclusionary requirement. The issue is just, um, for reasons that we can't explain, DHCD or someone higher up, um, determined that ten percent affordability requirement, that's okay, kind of without question. But anything more than that kind of has to go through a defense. As, as I understand it, guidelines are about to come out. We probably know more tomorrow about, um, about how you then go about proving that if you want to say fifteen or twenty percent that you're not making development under, under the fifteen unit acre, um, scenario, that you're not making that, uh, uneconomic. So I don't think they're going to make it too difficult. I hope to God that they don't. But you're right. I mean, the, the law is not about affordability, but there's not a barrier to you doing something about affordability if you choose, as long as it's within that framework. The ten or eight percent.
I would think most towns would want to do the ten percent because it's going to throw off your forty B numbers. You want to stay above ten percent forty B. So you want to have at least ten percent of whatever units we allow to be affordable.
Yeah. Sorry.
Um, yeah, I, I had a question about the, um, incentivizing the mixed use. Um, so could you go a little bit more into that? Um, you had mentioned maybe a density bonus, like for example, if, uh, typically it would be fifteen units per acre, if they include mixed use, would inappropriate density be twenty units per acre? Um, or, you know, you can go up an extra story or something to that effect. Are there any other incentive ideas that you might have?
So depending upon the parcel that's being developed, if it were a larger one, you know, you may provide an incentive for some horizontal multi, you know, horizontal mixed use, if you will, as long as the, the building at the street has vertical mixed use. So you might provide more units than fifteen units an acre, either going up or on the site. There's a couple of ways to play that. But I think the idea is that since you can't require it, what might you do to make it appetizing to a developer to do that ground floor commercial? So the way that, that I think DHCD will be perfectly happy to accept that is if it's done on an incentive, which means it's still voluntary for the developer. But theoretically, you're giving them enough housing to make it worth their while.
Thank you.
I, I have one more quick question. I'm pretty sure, uh, on something like would assisted living or nursing come under any of those units?
So assisted living could, I mean, it's, you know, from a, from a building permit perspective, I think it actually is reported as multifamily. Nursing home is a different creature. That's actually, from a land use perspective, not necessarily considered a residential use. So getting into a lot of arguments about whether it's residential, but I think the point is if someone wants to do uh, an assisted living development in a district that allows multifamily at fifteen units an acre, there's no reason why you can't say in the list of uses allowed in the district, assisted living.
Okay.
It's just that they, you know, can't require them to do that, but you could make it, you could make it available.
Right. You couldn't require an age restriction, but if you were allowed zoning and the developer chose to do an age restriction, that's a different scenario.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So what would be next? I know you gave that timeline before, but as a quick glimpse, so just wondering what in your view would next steps be?
I think we need to do a little more work on the model analysis. There's this point where we're going to have to start saying, having a dialogue with you, like, um, so if the model is, if we're going to start building setbacks or anything like dimension, any sort of dimensional rules into the model, what are they going to be and how does that impact the yield, the unit yield? We're going to kind of try to get as close as we can to what you would normally put in a, in a zoning district. We're not at, at this time, um, at, at least under this contract with MHP, not supposed to be getting to draft zoning. But the assumption is that you will probably continue to be funded and that would come next. But I think we need to get to will these, will these areas, whatever they're going to be, satisfy the requirements? And that's what we're trying to get to. So I think, you know, the point Lauren was trying to make is that it's not as simple as just let's write a district that says fifteen units an acre. There's all these other pieces to it, like having enough land that's contiguous so that you've got a, what a developer would say is a reasonable site for multifamily development.
Right. The other thing I would say for you to think about is that, and we'll have more information, um, once we have confer with DHCB about this sort of question about the Avalon Development Agreement. But if there is a scenario in which that parcel's not going to be feasible, you would then start to think about, well, where else will we make up those fifty acres? Because if you're looking at the, um, the Southwest cutoff site, that's, you know, under, it's just over twenty-seven. So then, you know, if the Avalon parcel is rolled out, we need to start thinking about, okay, then what's next? So just something for you to.
But I would wonder, um, wouldn't that be a sub-district density? Could Avalon at a minimum be a sub-district density? And qualify, so maybe not all forty acres would be thrown out. Maybe there's a, if it's twelve units per, do we get, is, do we meet a sub-district?
So if the whole parcel is subject to the development agreement, that's going to be a constraint. And we don't know that right now, speaking on this. We just want you to know. The development agreement typically would refer to a site, you know, a defined parcel with boundaries and recorded with the registry and so forth. I'm assuming that's what this development agreement is. And if that's the case, then you, you know, it doesn't matter what the zoning says. Someone really can't build on the site because the development agreement would get in the way. So we're trying to understand that.
Well, I'm just wondering if the development agreement actually is in compliance in some way, like whether it's, maybe it's not that fifteen, but it's in compliance as a sub-district. Does that help?
Well, it would have to be a sub-district to something that's, that it's part of. So you'd typically what you have is is a district with a sub-district within it, not separate from it. So you have to think about what are you plopping that land into?
Got you.
Yeah.
I do. I understand. Um, well, and one thing, just from my perspective, one thing that, um, stood out to me a little bit, when you show those examples, I noticed, you know, it was a point three four acres, one point six three acres, and we need to get to fifty. So when I multiply those examples, like, I don't even know how to fit that in somewhere, or if we, I'd want to fit that in somewhere. So, um, so I kind of gravitate towards that Avalon, you know, that Anthony mentioned Kimball. You know, like really where we could feasibly do that. I don't, I don't know how we multiply out those examples fifty times or, or three, actually a hundred and fifty times if we're just talking point three acres.
Right. Those examples are really, if you're looking, for example, like at a downtown and you're taking a bunch of smaller parcels and then looking at, like, for example, when you saw the first example of the density of the fifty acres and it's broken into a bunch of small parcels, that's sort of where you're seeing an example like that come to fruition. If you're taking like a wider swath of a, of a downtown neighborhood, for example, and, and applying the zoning to it.
Okay.
I think sometimes those pictures are really just to say this is kind of an example of what this density looks like. And I got to tell you, um, Carrie, it, it matters to me to at least be able to communicate to this to people because I actually had a local official in another town say, we don't want seven-story buildings. And I said, fifteen units an acre isn't a seven-story building. But so we're just approaching this from, this is kind of an example of what you already have. Yes, of course, it's nowhere near fifty acres, but this is kind of the, the, the physical development we're talking about.
Okay. That's helpful. Any final thoughts or questions?
Well, just on that, that particular one piece that you, um, mentioned, the point three four acres that has eleven units. I thought there was something about five acre minimums. So where, how does that fit that?
Yeah, it doesn't. We're trying to show you what the building, the height of the building.
Okay.
Looks like. Yeah, I, it's a fair question you're asking. We're just doing this so people can understand. We're not talking about skyscrapers.
Got it. Okay.
Bill, you have something too?
Yeah, I was going to say that, that asked the same question that Millie just asked. Um, so we would have to make a, a a zoning area much larger than that particular lot in that area and then allow that for everything in that zoning area.
Okay.
Right. You could see, for example, if you're looking at half acre sites, you take eight of these together, make it, you know, however many you need. And then you can see on each of those sites potentially that kind of development, that level of density percolating each of those sites potentially. So that's where you start to see. But again, the examples were not to, to show you an example of a district, just to show you an example of what that density looks like in your town.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds like we have a couple of next steps. If there's no further questions, um, thank you so much. And I think we have a copy of that presentation as well. So that's great. Thank you. Really appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll be back. Thanks so much. All right. Have a good rest.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the continued public hearing for four fifty-nine Whitney Street Site Plan Approval and Site, um, excuse me, Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Groundwater Protection Overlay District bylaw for the proposed addition of forty-five hundred square feet of warehouse space and associated improvements. So for that, I believe I'm bringing in Alpine American, Brian Falk, it looks like. And then we'll see, does anyone else he wants to bring in?
Uh, Brian Falk, probably.
Yeah, it looks like I promoted him upstairs. Oops.
Hi. How are you?
Good thanks. Is there anyone else that you want to bring in or is this the team here?
We have our whole team here. Um, so nobody else. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, um, I know that we received some materials late yesterday. I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look. Did everyone have a chance to review all the information?
I looked over some of it, but not all of it.
I have not.
I got through most of it.
Okay. Amy?
Um, yeah.
Okay. So I think, um, what might be helpful is it just, if you wouldn't mind providing maybe an introduction to the project, a brief overview and then to wherever we can um, lend any sort of, um, any questions or things that would be helpful. I don't think we will be able to do a full in-depth review. I think um, most of the board's supposed to read through all the materials, but at least to get you started, I'm happy to hear a brief introduction.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to walk everyone through it. Um, I'm Brian Falk from Iroquois Connell on behalf of the applicant, Post Akawa Alpine American. Um, and with me tonight is Ben McNally from Alpine, Chris Ryan from Meridian Engineering, our site engineer, and Neil Cruthers from Mills Construction. Um, so to orient yourself, four fifty-five Whitney Street, this is right on the Berlin line off of Whitney Street, where the last property before you go into Berlin. Um, this is the industrial district and also groundwater protection district area three. Um, as was mentioned, we're seeking site plan approval and a special permit in the groundwater protection district for pre-existing non-conforming use. And this is so that we can do a forty-five hundred square foot addition um, to the existing building. This building is twenty-two thousand square feet. Uh, so roughly a twenty-two percent increase in building size on the existing site. Um, our use is light manufacturing with accessory office and warehouse space. Alpine bought the property in twenty eighteen. Um, the business conducts sales and service for blown film extrusion machines, which is used primarily in the medical packaging industry. Um, the machines themselves are manufactured in Germany and then shipped to Northborough. At the site, company keeps and ships the machines and does some light assembly and dry runs to make sure that they're in working order. But the actual blowing and creation of films takes place at customer locations, not in Northborough. So we bring the machines in, do some light assembly, make sure they're working, and then they go off and we handle the sales and service and distribution. But the actual blowing of the films, um, that takes place at the customer location, not in Northborough. Um, as I mentioned, the addition is off of the existing buildings to the rear of the property. It will make the building essentially an L shape. Um, and the addition is solely for warehouse and storage space. Um, the use will stay the same. We're just going to have more room inside for storage of the machines. The, you know, there will not be an, because of this, there won't be an increase in employees or additional traffic because the use is essentially staying the same. Um, just more room for storage indoors. The addition will be screened by the existing mature vegetation that's on the site. If you've been out there, um, you've seen we have a lot of, um, existing mature trees all on the property line, um, which provides good screening right now, um, for our neighbors in Berlin. There's a residence, small residential community just over the line in Berlin. Um, so we're, we're keeping that existing screening and then we're adding some screening, which is shown on the site plan we submitted that was updated as of March seventh. Um, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Um, we're enhancing the screening on site. So, um, the view should only get better for our neighboring, uh, neighboring properties. We received a section six finding special permit from the ZBA in late February that allows for us to extend the pre-existing non-conforming use, um, and also the rear setback and parking requirements. Um, I mentioned we're pre-existing non-conforming on parking. We have twenty-nine spaces right now. Zoning would call for fifty-four. We're adding five new spaces for a total of thirty-four. Um, and again, since we're not adding any staff, we believe parking will be sufficient. It works for us now. Um, and with this addition, we're eliminating the need for, um, the storage trailers that you may have seen on site. Those will go away. So we'll have more room for parking. Um, and so it's mentioned in the plan director's memo, but we're requesting a waiver from strict compliance with the parking requirements because of this. Um, we're comfortable that with thirty-four spaces, we'll have sufficient parking. We've been there for five years now and parking hasn't been an issue, um, even with twenty-nine spaces. Um, so seeking a pre-existing non-conforming use special permit in area three of the groundwater protection district. Um, light manufacturing of the site predated the nineteen eighty-six enactment of that overlay district. Um, so under the bylaw, the board. So under the bylaw, the board may grant the special permit to expand the use in area three. If it finds that the use is allowed in the underlying zoning district, which it is, and that the expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the water supply than the existing use. Our use isn't changing. And if anything, I think the changes at the site will improve any potential impact on the groundwater. Our site plan shows some water quality improvements at the site. We've had some discussions with Fred Litchfield on that point. We think overall the site will function better and actually work better in the groundwater protection district than it currently does. Regarding site plan approval, the planning board may make the determinations that are required by the zoning bylaw and the board's regulations. I detailed those determinations in the project narrative and development impact analysis that I submitted with the application. Those are all there. I had mentioned our budding neighbors in Berlin. I spoke to a few of those residents myself. They obviously had some concerns about our plans and wanted to know what was going on. And I had mentioned to them that we would be looking to keep the screen that's there and enhance screening. And some of the things I talked to them about that I'll offer to you that we've agreed to are planting our provided screening along the property line. You'll see some spots on the site plan where we're doing that. Will help downward facing lighting to minimize light spillover and the, and the screen, the enhanced screening will also help with that as well. And then the drainage enhancements that are shown on the plan will help with any potential offsite runoff. Again, that's all shown on the March 7 plan that you received. We reviewed, wrapping up, we reviewed the planning director's comment letters and the one that was most recently updated yesterday. I can offer a couple of notes regarding the points from the ZBA hearing. We've responded to all the recommended, recommended plan changes and conditions that's shown on the May 7 plan. One item will be supplementing the site plan with a revised general note six regarding vegetation removal. Chris shares me that's already been done and it'll be ready to be delivered. And we're working to provide a building rendering, which is something that the ZBA conditioned, a special permit on that we provide you, playing board with a building rendering. We are working on that. One of the challenges is that this is a manufactured building, so there isn't a true architect. And trying to get a building rendering out of the, the company has been a challenge, but we are working on it and we will have that for you. So you can get a sense of what this will look like compared to the existing building. And with respect to the filing with this board, we've responded to all of the recommended plan changes and conditions. I think that's noted in Lori Connor's most recent memo. Also mentioning the town engineers February 27th comment letter. I can offer just a few notes. For one, we request a waiver from the professional certification regarding hazardous materials on site. It's mentioned in Fred Litchfield's memo that when he did a site inspection with us, he identified a, a storage locker for paint that was actually brought in from our former facility in Natick and, and with the movers. That's since been removed from the site. So I know it was requested, we have a condition of approval that that be removed. We've already complied that the locker is offsite. We also accept the recommended conditions for pre-building permit submissions that are mentioned in Fred Litchfield's memo. And finally, as I mentioned, we have updated the site plans to show water quality improvements near the level spreader. If you have questions about that, I'm going to turn to Chris to get you more detail on that. But from our original submission and in discussions with Fred Litchfield, we made some changes to further improve drainage improvements at the site. With that, happy to address your questions and thank you for your time.
Fred, do we have an updated memo from you or need a memo? Actually, I'm just trying to find a memo.
You do not have an updated memo from me. The memo that Attorney Falk referenced was February 28. That's the only memo that I did. I did have some discussions with the engineer regarding the drainage improvements. I had asked him to make a couple of tweaks and he was going to be working on that. What they have proposed is an improvement. I'm just looking for a little bit more so that it could be more easily maintained in the future to make sure that any contaminants that run across a parking lot are captured before they're discharged to that level spreader. I believe he was working on that. He was doing a little bit more research on some options.
Okay. And the impervious calculations I saw that came over as revised and that, did your, is that all set or?
That, that is all set. The majority of the site is grandfathered, if you will, because it was all paved and the building was there before the bylaw was adopted in 86 has already been referenced. So much of the site is exempt from that calculation. So it's really 15% of what's left. So and they're proposing recharge of the roof area that they're adding, which also doesn't go towards that impervious cover calculation. So it is fine.
Okay. And then Lori, for your letter, I know you sent your revised letter, you, you commented where most things have been addressed. There's a few outstanding items there from your perspective.
Uh, yeah. So one of the items has already been discussed. That's the rendering that I'm expecting. They mentioned the general note that needed to be revised, having to do with the removal of trees. Let's see. The only other comments, oh, actually, they noted, I couldn't find the box, the note that said that the parking lot will be milled and repaved. And so he pointed that out to me. So I have now found it. I don't see any issues with that. And so pretty much everything else has been addressed.
Okay. Great. Any board questions at this time or comments? Amy?
I just had a couple of questions, probably for Attorney Dineski. I actually haven't had time to read some of the memos that came in yesterday. But when looking at the old building, I don't know, Attorney Dineski, are you there?
That's good evening.
I don't know if Lori mentioned this to you, but um, I, when I first looked at this application, I noticed that the site plan has a side setback of 20 feet. Yet it's industrial and it borders a residential neighborhood in Berlin. So I was just curious, shouldn't that be 100 foot setback?
That question would go to the fact that there is a 100 foot setback for industrial when the neighboring or abiding district is residential. I only saw this question briefly before the meeting started. It is in another community and I would like a little opportunity to examine that more closely before providing an answer to the board.
Okay. So question, I had a couple of questions and I can forward the email to the board. My questions were about the 100 foot buffer between the residential and the industrial, but also there was a non-conforming rear setback. And that was what the ZBA approved, the extension of the non-conforming rear setback. Yet allowing this addition to go towards a neighboring building, they're actually within the 100 foot setback. There's supposed to be 100 foot setback between the edge of the building and the residential district. And the way I read the non-conforming bylaws is you would need a variance to make it. I can read it out loud. In the to create a new non-conforming shall require a variance. Perhaps provided, however, the extension of an exterior wall, which would be the back one, along the same non-conforming distance only needs a special permit. So I agree that the rear setback would just need a special permit for non-conforming. But since it's going also towards the residential, I think right there it needs a variance, but I think we'd need, I'd like to ask Attorney Dineski to review that.
I can include that among the issues to provide an answer to the board on.
My question would be, as a planning board, we shouldn't approve the site plan until they get a variance if they need it. And it's within the 20 day appeal period, like would the planning board appeal the ZBA decision or could they just reopen it and add the variance to it? I just wanted to know how to do that without letting the 20 days expire.
If there is a determination that there is, and this would be a general principle anyway, zoning relief that's required and was not obtained, then an applicant would need to reapply or make an additional application for that relief. It wouldn't be a reopening, if you will, of the application that was already heard because that was a decision based on a notice that provided for certain things that were requested, something not requested, we need to be the subject of a different notice if that's the determination that we come to.
Okay. Thank you. That was my concern before going forward with the site plan to get that decided.
Okay. So it sounds like we need clarification on that. And then any other questions? Okay. I realized we didn't get to dive in too deeply, but this is a public hearing. So if there are any comments from the public, you're welcome at this time. If anyone has anything, just raise your hand and I'll bring you in. Okay, I don't see any public comments. So why don't we, would it make sense, do you think we'll know more Attorney Dineski by the next meeting that we have, which is? Is it April 4? Is that our next meeting?
I, I can respond by that date if that's the meeting.
Okay. Lori, does that work? Continue to April 4?
Yes.
Okay.
Accommodate them at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Does that work for the applicant, April, to continue to April 4 at 6:00 PM?
Yep, that works for us. Thank you.
Okay, great. So then is there a motion to continue the public hearing for 459 Whitney, excuse me, continue the public hearing for 455 Whitney Street Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Groundwater Protection Overlay on April 4 at 6:00 PM?
I moved.
Second?
Again.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
I'm sorry.
Millie?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. We'll see you back in a few weeks. Thanks so much. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the continued public hearing for 0 and 301 Barless Reparcell H for Site Plan Approval and a Groundwater Protection Overlay District Special Permit for Development of a Distribution Center and Warehouse Project. So let's see. I see Dave. Israel. Is Kelly on the team?
Mm-hmm.
Kelly. And I'll let make sure we have everyone. Oh, Scott Weiss probably looks like.
Yes, please promote Kelly and Scott Weiss.
Got it. Okay. May I just take a minute? Do I have everybody on your team?
And Israel as well, if he's on.
Yep, got Israel. Okay, Israel, Dave, Scott and Kelly. Is that everyone?
Yes, I believe that's everyone on our end.
Okay, great. So why don't we get started then, unless you have anything else that you want to present? I believe our, our task tonight is to go through the conditions and get that squared away. Unless there's anything else that you wanted to present or discuss?
Madam Chairman, if I can just address the board very briefly, I haven't appeared before the board. I was at the last hearing, but I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Kelly Jordan Bryce. I'm a partner at the law firm of Pinkley Allen and Snyder in Boston. And I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Tara's company. As you know, in advance of tonight's hearing, we received a draft of the conditions of approval for the project that were put together by the planning board. We reviewed those draft conditions very carefully and thoroughly and provided our comments on the proposed conditions to Lori Connors this past Friday. Before we get into the specifics, I just kind of want to refresh everyone's recollection as to where we are in this process. This is a remand hearing, as everyone knows, from a land court decision in which the court found that the requested site plan approval and special permit should be granted or should have been granted as the applicant satisfies all bylaw criteria. We are trying to be as collaborative and accommodating as we can in this process, even in certain areas where we respectfully submit that we believe that the planning board is in fact exceeding its authority under the remand order and under the bylaw. With that being said, we have striven to be respectful of this process at all times and accommodate the board with respect to those conditions that have been proposed as much as possible while keeping the project feasible. We've also tried to be respectful of the abutting residential property owners as much as we can, both in our original site plan, the modifications we've agreed to, as well as our proposed changes to the conditions in order to minimize any perceived impacts that the residential neighbors may have from the project. We have pushed back on certain areas where we believe the conditions would exceed the power of the planning board and would otherwise jeopardize the feasibility of the project. We truly have gone as far as we can with respect to these proposed conditions and hope that the board will accept our proposed changes and close out the hearing process. Before I conclude, I just wanted to address one other issue that, or clarify one point in connection with our comments on the proposed conditions. The more board may have noticed that some of our comments appear in all caps. The language that appears in all caps in our comments represents comments that we had on the condition language and is not proposed language changes for the condition. So just to be clear, we did not intend for any of the all caps to be proposed condition language, but rather to reflect our comments and concerns about some of the proposed language. And with that, I apologize if that created any kind of confusion in reviewing our proposed changes and we're happy to address any, any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Great. Nice to meet you. Thanks for introducing yourself. Is this the first time you've worked with Northborough?
So I represent the good Harris company quite a bit. I represented them probably for over 20 years. So and I have been involved, I was involved in the land court process and I have been involved to a certain degree on the remand hearing as well.
Okay. So I just want to clarify a little bit that for the last six years that I've been around, most of these conditions are conditions that we place on other properties in the same exact area with the same exact permitting, site plan and special permit. So there's nothing really extraordinary or different about yours. So I think maybe being new to town, you haven't had the opportunity to see other decisions that have many of the same exact conditions. So there's nothing that I would want you to feel or I think onerous, I think was the word you used in an email that was sent. And then also I just wanted to say that as part of the remand, our role was to go through the nine criteria that was claimed we didn't go through the first time. So I think we've been mindful of trying to put into context where our conditions fall under that criteria. So I think the board spent a lot of time and the reason we spent so long, I think you mentioned it was five and a half hours, is to take the time to go through the conditions and figure out what could make this project work if it had the right conditions. And to really go through those criteria and figure out where those conditions would fit in order to make this the right project for the area that it's located. So I just wanted to clarify that. With that, why don't we get started with what we have here as a draft? We have, Lori, I think the best one to use, maybe the the markup maybe, I want to, so for me, when I was going back and forth, there are some things that I thought were okay and some things that I prefer we just keep what we originally had. So what is the best process you think for reflecting that? It's a little confusing in the markup. I'm wondering if we should use the original?
It would be helpful for me if you could use the markup one, certainly reference the March 8 one if you're confused about how the original conditions document was laid out. But if we could kind of figure out the points of agreement first, I think that that would be the easiest lift and then concentrate on the points of disagreement.
Okay. Does that work for the board? Well, first of all, has the board had a chance to review and sort of consider? Okay, great. So why don't we start, I'm going to do, I'm going to pull up the original. I just want to have a copy of the original running at the same time. And then I think all of us probably have the markup. Let's see. Give me one second. Okay, so let's start with A. Did anybody have any, so that it looks like in the markup here, we have the addition of all else was fine, except. except at the addition of all if and as required by the town of Northborough. Any thoughts on that from the board?
That's fine with me.
Sorry, I'm still pulling up. So I wondered, I had a question actually of the rationale behind that addition. Was there something you were thinking? But there are other permits at stake here, including, you know, state, any sort of state permits or MWR or things like that. I'm wondering why you specified the town of Northborough. There's a rationale behind that?
I just think by if required appeared in the middle of the sentence and I think by keeping that comment at the end, it just is for clarity purposes and just makes it cleaner.
What if we did, I'm sorry, after the comment where it says obtain all necessary? What if we say obtain all required permits and approvals? And then take off the if required and then end at public works?
Just, um. So. If required and just leave it at that?
Well, I was actually thinking with this, um, the applicant shall comply with all applicable bylaws, rules, regulations and codes and prior to construction activities, obtain all required permits versus all necessary permits. So then you don't need the if required and you don't need the ending part.
If it's applicable, then that's what's required. So if it's not applicable, it's not required. So you don't actually need the words required anywhere because it's kind of, it should be understood that if it's not applicable, it's not required.
Um, yes, I guess I didn't, I didn't see the need to really add anything else to this one.
I was just doing it to, um, cut off the ending if there was a concern about leaving out like state permits and stuff. So it was saying obtain all required permits.
And then it's including ours. Yeah, I, I think, I think we leave it as is. It's all permits, not just ours. It's anything applicable to this.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
Scott Weiss with the Gutierrez Company, just for a point of clarification, we have no problems with your language of obviously a required permit is a required permit. There's, there's no, no issue there. But when you start listing out the specific permits that are included, some of which may or may not be required, as I understand, for example, an earthwork permit may not be required in the future because some of that is proposed to get consolidated. Is that correct?
That's a good question. Lori, do you want to speak to that? Is there, is there an earthwork permit at hand here or, or no longer?
I'm going to defer to Fred because that's his bylaw change as proposed.
Currently, as it stands, one would be required under the bylaw. The earthwork bylaw is part of the town code, not part of the zoning bylaw. And it is required for a project that's going to alter or bring, import or export more than 200 cubic yards of material. Land disturbance permit, which carries a lot of the same conditions, but more stringent requirements for controlling runoff and erosion control and post-construction maintenance is also required on any project that's going to exceed one acre of disturbance. What we're proposing at town meeting, as you know, is to provide an exemption under the earthwork bylaw, earthwork boards bylaw, allowing a project that also already obtained a land disturbance permit to be exempt from the earth work board permit. So today, prior to town meeting, both are required. Hopefully after town meeting, only one will be required, the land disturbance permit in this case.
Okay, but because this was submitted prior to that town meeting, this, they do need an earthwork permit?
They, right now, they do if they were to go to construction. But if they were to go to construction after town meeting, they, and the article prevails, they would be exempt. It's not when they filed with you, it's when they file the application for a land disturbance permit. Or if they were to try to apply for an earthwork permit prior to town meeting, they would still need it.
Okay, so originally this had if required for the earthwork permit. So what happened in this revision is there, there was a removal of if required. So if you were to negate that edit and the addition of the text, the follow-up text, it would still, it would actually state the earthwork permit if required, a land disturbance and stormwater management permit. Actually, I'm going to share my screen with the original so everyone can see what I'm looking at. Okay, so can everyone see the earthwork board if required? Okay, so this was the original, which did make it so this was if it were required, not necessarily. So then if it happens after April 24th or whatever the case, it's not required. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so the one, the next one, which was removed, actually, for some reason, Lori, that the number taken was incorrectly transcribed. The original, well, the one that I had anyway, it was the environmental standards in the zoning bylaws, which is 705040 A through F. I don't know, for some reason, section 710060G came through, but that wasn't the correct one. So really, this is, if you look in the bylaws, it's the environmental standards under 705040 A through F.
I think the confusion was the name. So those are environmental performance standards. So I'll clarify that.
Okay.
Are you okay, the applicant, okay with it otherwise?
Could you repeat? Focus on that heading into the hearing because I was looking at the other, I didn't realize it was a typo in the conditions. I'm happy to take a look at this and provide a response, but I just need to go through the bylaw and just confirm that. If it's what's required by the bylaw, I don't think we would have any objection, but I just haven't had a chance to look at that.
Okay, it is required.
Could you repeat the, Madam Chair, the, the, the reference, the code reference?
Sure. And actually, I'll tape it. No, I can't do that. It's seven dash zero five dash zero four zero. And it's A through F. And if you have the current book, it starts on seven, page 7-49. It's the environmental performance standards. And that should be it. Okay, so there's that. Next, we have C. So we're going to be off by a number, I think, because C now moved up to B here. Let's see. Any comments on this next one? So it just was the addition of upon such transfer, any and all obligations of applicant here under shall transfer to a new property owner?
The only thing is originally it said 50% and it was changed to substantially all. I don't know if that matters. I think we had 50% and then maybe Attorney Donahue changed it to substantially all.
Well, Attorney Janeski, I feel like we talked about that last time. We wanted to quantify it somehow. But is that, do you remember this case? Was it something we wanted to quantify it at the time and picked a number?
Carrie, if I may?
Yes.
There were certain conditions that have already been discussed. And you, you folks agreed to the changes that Mark Donahue proposed. So I incorporated those changes into this text because you already agreed to them. So that was one of them.
Okay. I don't remember that. I remember talking about quantitative versus qualitative, but I don't remember. I tried to go back and look at the minutes, but I didn't see it.
Madam Chair, there are actually two issues here. The first sentence is respecting notice to the board if there is a transfer or sale substantially all of the assets in the project. The second sentence is simply reflecting that the conditions of the approval will apply to someone who takes title to the property as a new owner. It's really just a question of dividing the responsibility between the applicant and if there is a subsequent owner.
Okay, so I don't have a problem with the addition necessarily. I think we're just looking at, well, I guess we did have it of substantial. We may have changed it from percentage to substantial. I'm just going back to the original.
The, the substantial language, I believe I had commented at a previous meeting, is fairly typical for that kind of a notice requirement.
Okay, then I'm all set. I couldn't remember that we came to the conclusion.
Okay, is the board in general okay with the addition of that line? Let's see, if I, otherwise. Okay, the next is what's this, C, just the addition, this looks like a change to removing the planning board and chief of police and putting town planner and engineer. On this one, I think I preferred the board, the planning board stay on this. I didn't feel strongly about the fire chief. Any comments from the board on that?
I would agree. I'd say the planner and I would, I would still say the chief of police should be on there.
So the reason why it originally, originally said chief of police is for emergency purposes?
Oh, was that the original?
Yes. So it's originally said the chief of police. So if there's a fire or, you know, a break in or whatever, then the police chief would know who to contact.
Okay, so, so in the one that I'm looking at, the original said the applicant shall provide the planning board and the chief of police with the appropriate contact information. So it must not have been, that must have morphed from a couple of edits then because it sounded like originally the intent was to notify the police of an emergency. I don't know how it changed so much.
I think the applicants crossed out planning board and engineer and changed it to town planner and chief of police, I mean engineer. But I think the chief of police should have it, say it's a weekend. But I don't think it's a big deal. I think if one person got it, hopefully they could give it to all the other people that they thought needed the information.
Okay, so Lori, is that standard then that if you'd have the information or should the chief of police have it? Does it matter in this case?
I would rather, if, if somebody were to have it, I'd rather it be the chief of police. And then whether it's the town engineer or whether it's me in the planning department, I don't think it matters. We just need somebody to contact if there's an issue.
So maybe it sounds like chief of police and town planner makes sense here? Unless Fred, are you, should you be on this in case it's an issue?
My issue would be more on a day-to-day operation to see if there's something that's going on with the drainage system, not so much an emergency. So it, it's fine with me either way. The, we're all going to share this information. It's not going to be held in one person's office and not shared. So I don't, I don't have a preference.
Okay, so board, it sounds like we should keep the chief of police in there? And Lori, is your preference to be included as well?
I think I'm fine with the town planner change, but the chief of police should definitely stay.
Yep. Okay. So it sounds like, meaning Bill, you're happy with town planner and chief of police?
Yes.
All right. So it's town planner and chief of police. Okay, next section we have. Lori, when I'm looking at the original, which date? So I should be looking at the date 38, not 37? Is that, prior to the markup one, is it the 38 version I'd look at?
Um, the most so the most up-to-date sketch is the March 17th, however, the most up-to-date plan was, uh.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Lori. I think, Carrie, were you talking about plan or the conditions document?
Yeah, just the condition.
Construction man, I'm sorry. March 8, this original version that they marked up.
Okay, good. Let me get rid of the other one then. So I don't get confused. I just want to make sure, like, we have something to look at, otherwise it's hard to get through this. Okay, so prior to construction activity, is that what you guys can see right now? Yep. Okay, so the next one looks as the, oh, I see why you brought that up, Lori, because the next edit talks about the reference sketch. So we don't typically expand, usually we just say the prior to construction, the applicant shall, and then just dive into it. We don't ordinarily refer to any specific. I don't like the idea of referring to a specific sketch. This isn't something we ordinarily do. I don't know if board members have another thought on this.
I have a question. If, if we agreed on all the conditions below, if they could just be added to the site plan, like, we're making a decision to approve the site plan with these conditions. So how does the sketch get added to that? Doesn't seem as official, you know? We're approving the site plan with conditions plus the sketch, maybe? I think the sketch, if I get is being done to save money, which is fine while we're going through all these conditions because they can add and show things. But if we come to a decision at the end, can't all the items on the sketch just be included into the site plan? And that way, like 20 years from now, people aren't like, well, should we look at the site plan? Should we look at the sketch? I don't know. That was just my question because we never have had a sketch before.
Yes, we would need the site plan to be updated. So if, if the decision says that the site plan has to be modified, I mean, even if it's just referencing a sketch, it's still, you still have to modify the entire site plan because otherwise we won't know what to reference when you're going through the construction process.
Right.
So if I may, Madam Chair. So just to clarify two, two items. Is it the board's procedure? And I don't think they've done this in the past. You guys don't sign a set of approved site plans, do you?
Good question. Lori, do we just ordinarily sign the decision?
Um, usually the decision references, so I don't think that they typically sign the site plan. But when you provide a plan that modifies in accordance with the conditions of approval, I take the decision and then I put checks next to each of these conditions. And then I write on the decision, the date of the final plan. And then on the plan itself that goes into the file, I highlight final. And then that is what goes with us when doing inspections of your site. So ultimately, whether you do it now or whether you do it once the decision is rendered, the site plan has to be modified.
Yep, and, and we would, in the past, I don't think we had, had signed site plans either. That's why I was clarifying. But obviously, the set of plans would have to be updated, certainly when you apply for a building permit to reflect all the items shown on the decision. And the reason for including the sketch is really just to make the references easier and more clear. If you don't want to include the reference sketch, that's fine. And we, we can certainly agree to update, you know, following the completion of the decision, we will, you know, update, update the, the site plan.
This is neither here nor there, but we used to sign the site plans because I remember signing them. They were really big with the clear vellum and we had the black marker. I don't know when we stopped.
A lot of times, that is certainly done for subdivision plans or sign because those are recorded. Some communities we work in sign site plans, some do not. Some have them signed when they're at the building permit application, some do not. And I don't recall, I don't think we had done, had, you guys had signed site plans in the past projects we have done. But I didn't know if that had changed.
Hmm, okay.
Historically, I'm sorry, Carrie.
No, Lori and Fred. No, go ahead Fred.
Historically, the board did not sign site plans. It was only subdivision plans, but Amy's correct, they're my lives. There's a special pen that you need to sign it with so that it can be recorded at the registry, but it's only for subdivision plans because of the lauding. It's not site plans.
Okay, so back to the original question, does? This is all, so this is really just modifying the site plan for these, I guess. Is that what we'll just forge ahead with modifying the site plan? Do we need to reference the reference sketch?
Madam Chair, it's David Dineski. One of the ways to approach this might simply be to and this, this, I think would just be editing if the board is in agreement and substance that the plan be modified to show and then list the items, but reference also the sketch plan so that you have both written description and then a graphic reference so that when the modifications are submitted, there is the ability to compare the site plan to the sketch plan or vice versa to confirm that what was represented and described has actually been done.
And that, that is consistent with the edits that we provided as well.
Okay, so it seemed like your purpose for that was just to make sure we were referencing a specific plan.
It was more just in case there was any lack of clarity amongst the board members amongst, you know, any future participant staff or anybody so that everybody understood what the intent was. So everybody was clear and on the same page, you know, when you start, when the site and the property is lays out at an angle north, northwest, northeast, southwest, somebody may think it's some other side of the property than what might have been intended.
Okay, so with that, does the board like attorney Dineski's suggestion for that?
I do.
Yeah, I can't always see everyone at the same time. So if you're shaking, no, I can't necessarily see.
If you do look at our markup, that is how we marked that up, which was included a reference to the to the reference plan. And then did include listing out all the modifications that were sought as well, all in accordance with the reference plan. So everybody was on the same page. So it had both, it had the language and the plan. And the plan was really just a to help facilitate the understanding.
It does say in the markup where modifications to the site plan is required, any such modification, meaning the conditions noted herein is deemed approved by the planning board.
Okay, so is everyone happy with that?
I don't know if I want that sentence, maybe the sentence before it. So it's saying if they're doing modification after, okay, it's only modification using the conditions below. It's not modifying after we approve.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. We just wanted to be clear that those modifications are not some new plan because there are requirements later on in the decision. Let's say if we modify the plan, we have to come back to the board. We want to be clear that those modifications are basically approved.
I only agree to like the modifications that we have listed below, not any that happen after the decision.
That's exactly what we had.
Okay. It just seems by the language that it's saying, if as long as it's listed below, it's already deemed approved. So that's fine. But are there, does that preclude any other modifications? It's not clear if additional modifications could be made. That's the only thing, Amy, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, that's what first struck me as like, hey.
I think you have that covered in a separate condition, and I think it's towards the end of all the conditions where any future modifications and are covered by a different process entirely.
Okay.
And attorney Dineski can weigh in, certainly the planner can weigh in or our attorney can certainly tell you that, I'm sure.
Okay, attorney Dineski, do you think that we're covered along the lines of that concern? Do you think that we're covered for any additional modifications that another condition prevents that from happening?
Madam Chair, there is another provision, if not maybe two, that relate to changes or modifications that would require a return to the board. I read this language as only saying what's listed below is approved. And as a general comment and to repeat what I said earlier, the precise wording here still may require some editing for a final document, but substantively, I don't see that this would change the intent that the board's inclusion of this particular condition only relates to those items that are listed and the other conditions that require a return or other modifications rather that require a return to the board that is all still reserved.
Okay, so it sounds like we all have the same goal and that we may just have to fine tune the language.
So would it be attorney Dineski fine tuning that language right there and E?
Yes.
And again, as a general comment, I would think that once this exercise is completed, that the board would want to see a final document that the planner would prepare and I would certainly work for sure on that. I think just by virtue of the length of this document and the subject matter, this exercise is to identify the substance of the items and those changes, if you will, that may just be edits would be a sort of subsequent and final step.
Got it. That's helpful. Okay, so then getting past that, it looks like there was no edits made to this part, the installation of a five foot wide cement concrete walkway. We did have some disagreement on the trail. So originally we had the bypass trail just for pedestrian access. So and there was change to working, trying to work towards something. So board member comments on this from original to edited?
I am, I came up with a condition, but I'd like to share it because what concerned me is working in good faith could mean one thing to one person and one thing to another person. So I'll share what I was thinking. Can you see? What I'm sharing?
Yeah, so modify the site plan to depict reconstruction. Is that what you're?
Yep, that's how I modified their condition. So I have modified the site plan to depict the reconstruction of the slope and the aqueduct path. Noted as adjusting grading on reference sketch. So the adjusted grading is listed on the reference sketch. So that's why I pointed to that. To a five to 10% slope, but I mean, that would have to be determined by the town engineer, the DPW director and the MWRA. Or the applicant and and I wanted to either or like what if the MWRA comes back and says no? Or the applicant says, no, you know, I tried, but we can't do it. I wanted to ask if there could be a walking path provided. So I wrote, or the applicant will donate, provide an easement because I didn't know which they'd rather do to the town of Northboro. A six foot wide cleared walking trail on lot sixty six dash sixteen from the access drive headed west along parcel sixty six sixteen abutting the aqueduct. When we looked at the subdivision, lot sixty six dash sixteen is deemed undevelopable. So I was hoping in good faith in Ms. Kelly's letter. She mentioned that they work with good faith with the town. So I was hoping if the MWRA wouldn't be in agreement to adjust the slope, then we could have a path. So it doesn't stop. So the people on the current path don't just fall off the cliff there. And the intent of it was a goodwill gesture by the applicant to continue the current aqueduct trail in a similar fashion. It was also a recommendation by the police chief. So and it's only in the case that nothing can be worked out with the MWRA. If it all works out with the MWRA, then then everything's fine.
Board comments on that?
I, I think that that sounds like a reasonable approach.
Fred, thoughts on that number or that slope in general? Is that something that would help create that pedestrian circulation there or?
It could. It depends. I'm, I'm guessing that MWRA won't have a problem with the slope, provided it's not cutting into it as long as it's being added to, to make it more gradual. But it would take there, if it's within their property, then they would have to, they would have to prove it, not me. I would weigh in once it left and got back onto the, the site plan.
For the applicant, does that sound like a reasonable compromise not to tie you into a, if for some reason MWRA doesn't approve that there's another option for that? I think probably the goal of the board is to just make sure pedestrians can still cross there and it doesn't seem like that's possible if there's not some sort of adjustment.
So I think on our end, we just want to review the language that you had drafted, but you know, again, we want to work cooperatively with you and, and we would agree that we think there's a solution within the aqueduct right away. And can, can work with that. So once we see the language, I think we can hopefully work to agreeable terms.
Okay, so I'll leave it for now and I can forward my document to others. I might leave mine up, Carrie, because I had a change with the next one.
Oh, sure. Okay, so the next one was modify the site plan to depict the location. So I, there were no changes on the version I have. So is that your addition there?
Yes, because they were showing the location of the mature pine trees, but I also wanted to add these trees will not be removed or damaged during construction. Because it's one thing to show it, it's another thing to keep them there. Because we keep being, we're keep, we're promised over and over again that they won't be cut down. I just wanted to put it in writing.
I, I think the line above it says the location in preservation.
Okay, what happens if they do become damaged then?
You know, that would not be the intent. I think it's the same thing that happens with any unintended consequence that typically if a tree gets damaged, we would have to plant something in its place.
I could write that we can add, if they are damaged, we could plant something comparable to in its place. I mean, not 100 feet tall, but.
Yeah, in reality, a, a transplanted tree that's that large won't survive. So there's no such thing, but you, you can't transplant trees that are too large because then they won't survive. The, the idea and our commitment here is that we'll show where they are, we'll cordon them off and like the limit of any of our work, we're not intending to, to, you know, remove or do anything to those trees.
Do you think I should add the point? Does anybody on the board think I should add the point if they are damaged or removed, shall be replaced?
That makes sense to me.
Well, we just have to quantify it in a way, I guess, like looking for the exact replacement because it can't, that can't happen, but if there's some sort of reasonable.
Something that will grow to the same size.
At one lineman, we did 20 foot trees. I think, I don't know if that's the biggest you can go.
I think it all depends on the variety of tree you're talking about.
Right, these were, what are these pine trees right now? So I'd assume they'd be the same.
So attorney Dineski, if the intent is really like not to then have to replicate the exact tree, but we don't want to make, we want to some sort of quantifiable thing. Is there something that you recommend we could put here that covers if something happens to the trees, but without making it excessively difficult to replace?
Madam Chair, I think language could be included that reflects replacement with, and I'll use just a generic phrase here that we could refine for a final document, but of similar or same type and expected to grow to the same height as the tree that was damaged or destroyed.
Okay.
But that would be the concept to replace like with like as close as possible.
Okay, right. I think you, I mean, I would want them to be bad because that's what they are now. So I would think you'd want like at least a 20 foot tree versus like a six foot tree. I'll just put it in. We can get back to this.
Yeah, I just think your concern there would be you wouldn't want a 20 foot tree that is gonna die in three years versus a six foot tree that might be you know, live and be 25 feet tall in three years or something like that. So I just want to not dictate a size to a, to a, to a landscape, you know, or arborist type person. We're, we're not gonna, we're not looking to damage the trees anyway, but.
So, so but maybe Amy, if you just in a parenthesis, so we remember, and I've written one too, like attorney Dineski has suggested that we'd expect to grow to the same height. So however that.
But expect to grow to the same height. I mean, they can put in a one foot tree that you expect to grow. I think there needs, I, I think we should, we can leave it up to attorney Dineski to edit, but I do think there should be a, a size. It should be at least 10 feet if not, you know, whatever they say.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so the next one, is that your edit or an existing?
That's mine too. I'm going back to the very beginning, even Lori had the condition modify the site plan to depict a 10 foot wide landscape buffer along all sides of the parking lot in accordance to section 709030C4A. And Ms. Price mentioned that that doesn't apply here, but it actually does because if you go to the section 709, the next one is actually 709040 is industrial and it sends you back to all three O. So if you go to 709040, the, the industrial section, it tells you, you have to follow 709030. I can tell everybody what page it's on if you'd like. But I feel like we still have that landscape buffer around the parking lot. Seven oh nine, it's on page 799. It says off-street parking design standards for industrial uses. Any industrial use shall conform to the requirements of subsection C four, five and six. So the 10 foot wide landscape buffer is section four. So I just want to ask the applicant if they can try to point out on the, if it not today, maybe next time on the site plan where they can depict a 10 foot wide landscape buffer. And while I was at that section, I noticed that they called for bumper overhangs. Do you know offhand if there are bumper overhangs on the parking lot? It's supposed to protect the landscaping in the little areas on the parking lot. So the cars don't pull up on them or drip on them.
Amy, in this application, they are proposing berm. So that would do the same thing as the concrete bumpers. You usually only have the concrete bumpers where there is no berm. Or it's immediately adjacent to say a.
Okay, so there's a berm around all the landscaped areas within the parking lot?
Totally around the perimeter of the parking lot, including the landscape islands.
Okay, so I can just take it off. I just put it on here because I wanted to ask while I was going to that section, I noticed it. So it's on the landscaped islands and that covers that.
Okay, so that's just the standard part of the bylaw then.
Yep, but we'd never asked, so I figured I'd ask.
No, no, I'm sorry. I mean, like one you have up there now, not the bumper, not the bumper, but the, the 10 foot wide line landscape buffer along all sides of the parking lot is a requirement of our bylaw.
Yes, yep. It's on page 798.
Seven ninety.
Does anybody want me to wait or do you want to move forward?
No, I see it. I don't know if anyone else needs help finding it.
I'm just gonna leave mine up because the next one was um. The sound wall and I I was the one who added that condition. So I I changed it to modify the site plan to depict if they don't want to do a sound wall. There's another warehouse in Holliston and what they're doing actually is a thirty foot high earthen berm. But since this is the parking lot, I think we only really need like fifteen feet high. That's just my my guess. But I um, updated the comment and condition to say modify the site plan to depict a fifteen foot high earthen berm. Or fifteen foot high solid sound barrier wall. If installed on top of the berm, the wall height may be reduced to an amount equivalent to the height of the earthen berm. And then added landscaping and then I just said the intent of this fifteen foot barrier wall is to block the light and sound. Of the industrial use, which is less than a hundred feet from the abutting residential neighborhood. They were all different. I can pull up a picture of all different types of sound walls. Some of them are vinyl, some are concrete, some are. I forgot, but I can pull it up. Oh, and um, as long as there's no seams, it would not let through the site and. And light and sound. I know Ms. Price said that it was an overreach. But I found a lot of examples online that show between industrial areas and. Residential areas, especially within a hundred feet, that there's some sort of light and sound wall barrier.
So along those lines, Amy, I also saw that comment and I looked up. Uh, I sent Laurie an example and and I know you're sharing, so I won't share mine, but one of the. The the examples aren't the, you know, we see the ones on the highway and they do look really maybe like they're too much, but. In this particular, if you look around, it is specifically lists environments that need sound wall solutions and listed our distribution centers. Primarily be because they're coming up, popping up all over the place, backing right up to neighborhoods. So these are the perfect use cases where you'd need some sort of sound wall. And I can share that too. But they're not not necessarily looking for a, I think the concerns that we heard, oh, look, you're pulling up one now too, so um. The I think the concerns that we're hearing from the neighborhood is that this is, as you mentioned, closer than the hundred foot. Distance there, but also that they're seeing the lights, the noise. I think this certainly would help to alleviate some of that concern.
Even says complex zoning problems created by the need for industries and homeowners to exist in harmony. So I don't think it's an overreach. I think there are all different ways to do it. There's one, this looks vinyl, but there's just no spaces for the light or the sound to get through. This one's made out of wood.
I know it's a glorified fence a little to some extent.
Right, as long as there's no spaces, I guess if there's spaces in the light and the sound will seep through. But what I've noticed that the other warehouses are doing are earthen berm and earthen berm would actually be the perfect sound wall. Because it. It um, absorbs the sound and it absorbs the light, so that could also be used. I know some of the places they had mentioned the berm went up seven feet. So if you want to go to fifteen feet, just build up that earthen berm another eight feet. But there are areas where there's no earthen berm, so then it would have to go up like fifteen feet. But there is a warehouse in Holliston being proposed and they're going to do a thirty foot berm. With an eight foot fence on top, so they're covering their whole warehouse. Because it's next to residential neighborhood.
Thoughts from board members?
Um, so I think it's totally reasonable for this, especially at the proximity to the residential area, how close it is and. The activity that's going to be here in a light and sound um, protection. Um, I'm not certain about the earthen berm, if there's enough width there to build something up high enough or not, just don't know. Um, I preferably would think the wall would be a better idea. Um, unless I mean, I'd leave that to the experts to, you know, what we're what we're best.
Um, that thoughts from the applicant on these different options?
So I I think we stand by our position that this fifteen foot high or higher than that wall is overkill and. Is more intended for something along a highway as opposed to in a residential area and I just want to. And I know I want to be extremely respectful of the process here and I'm sure my client may want to um, chime in when I'm done, but. There are certain areas here that we also need to. To respect the integrity of what the land court decided in this case, and I just want to read a sentence from the court's decision.
Um, can you hold on that please so we can solve this issue right here?
Like I think Madam Chair, I don't mean to be disrespectful at all. I think it goes to this issue and kind of goes to the point. Where we're saying we want to be as reasonable as possible, but there are some conditions that we think exceed the power of the board.
And there's. Why don't you hold on that for a little bit longer so we can solve this issue right here? Because I want to show an example too and the use cases of which it applies. So Amy, I'm going to share for a second. So this is what I was looking at. So when you have here. Like literally the use case is distribution center and it's literally listing what we're running into here. The facility is running up to neighborhoods. The what did a good solution for when they're popping up all over the place and how to make it coexist with neighborhoods. So it's not just that big highway that kind of wall that we're talking about. These are su- these are solutions that when you come down, you know, not to. Here's a highway use case, fine, that could be overkill, but what we're talking about is when you have these distribution centers. What is a way to make it where you can block the noise of trucks? It serves as a visual barrier and it makes it more uh, acceptable to the neighborhood. And allows them to have enjoyment of their property, uh, which they have a right to as well. So I think that's important to be respectful of that as as well. Okay, um, Ms. Price, you're welcome to read, yeah, whatever you wanted to read.
So I think we have to, I mean, I I appreciate the fact that you're showing um, other distribution centers, but we also have to understand the topography. And the actual property that we're looking at here and. You at the la- after a trial in the land court, the land court wrote a decision and the judge said the project is surrounded by dense forests. And is situated a significant distance from an abutting properties. In addition, the thirteen point two one acre conservation restriction in the northwest section of the property will create a large. Forested buffer between the project and abutting residential properties. So here, I think the judge has already viewed this project and has already determined that there is a certain buffer in his words.
And those actually aren't his words. That's your prefiled testimony that was copied and pasted into that decision.
With all due respect, this is a decision after trial that I'm reading.
Right, but that's all prefiled. I went into every single footnote and tracked it into your prefiled testimony, so all of that verbiage comes direct. That's your words. We've had residents come with pictures. We can literally see the lights from that from the entranceway that. Several residents have been taking pictures. You can see the lights, you can certainly hear the noise. There's no disputing that that you'd be able to see lights from that property, even the residents who have sent in pictures of a simple LED light, you can see.
Madam Chair, I'm simply reading the findings of the trial court. Thank you.
Okay. In any case.
I think with the findings of fact, it's a hundred feet, even though over and over in the hearing. Um, the Gutierrez company is trying to say it's seven hundred feet. This parking lot is within the hundred foot buffer to the residential property line. Hundred feet, so I don't know how many trees are going to be in between that hundred foot buffer. It's it's a parking lot.
And and the thirteen acres are not between the parking lot and the residential. They're on the exact opposite side. So I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, hundred percent. It's not, it's not the same.
So I I think um, and and obviously we've been, this has been an issue that. Um, has been discussed, you know, at length and and we understand the concerns of the neighbors and. You know, board members will pick one distance, you know, it's a hundred feet. It actually is. A hundred feet to the closest residential property, but then that's only one property and then all the other properties are a lot further away and it's. Actually only fifty feet that's required as a as a buffer distance, but you know. I I think the point is is that we're trying to find um, a solution. And I think as we've indicated in in our language in the proposed decision that we're willing to. Um, install some type of fence and what we've proposed, we think is a reasonable. Um, type of fence to install in this situation, given the topography and 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 given the distances that that we're talking about. Um, so I think we're certainly open, as we've indicated in this language, to a fence. Um, perhaps we can. Uh, come up with something that's a little closer to uh, what the board would like to see in terms of. Maybe some sound qualities, but we're cer- but certainly not um. A fifteen foot high or twenty foot high sound barrier. Um, and and so I think it's just. Trying to find um, a compromise here with with a a type of fence that works.
Though what? If I may, Madam Chair, as well, just add to that.
Oh, sure, yes.
I'm sorry, so uh, and and uh, you know, obviously, this is this is a big point for everyone. Um, the building and the layout of the site and and to the point of those distribution center pictures you were showing. The building itself is your sound barrier from the truck court and the. And where the truck activity is, and that's how it was positioned to keep all of the truck loading and unloading on the opposite side of the building from. Uh, the residences facing to the east and away from there, so that was that was a uh, you know, an intentional approach. What we're talking about is a parking lot area, which is an auto parking area. It's not to say there's not lights or sounds or noises that that emanate from there. Um, and it's not, as as Israel said, you know, it may be a hundred feet to the closest property line and. Both comments are correct, a hundred feet to the closest property line, but all the residences are seven hundred plus feet away, the residential structures themselves. Um, and there's a fair amount of, you know, conservation area in between on the backs of those residential properties. Within that hundred feet and then on the backside of of our site as well, that that isn't going to be disturbed and would remain. Um, built out, any expansion of earthen berms would would eat into that existing landscaping, which I don't think anybody wants to see. Um, so it it does really come down to what this structure is. Um, and for a parking lot, we we think a, you know, fifteen foot, twenty foot. Sound wall is is. Above and beyond, and we want to come to some, as Israel said, some some reasonable, you know, accomplishable, achievable. End result and that's that's where we were with a solid panel fence. All the lights would be downlights as as required by the town night dark sky compliant, so the idea of a. LED bulb shining unprotected, it would not be the case. Um, so that's not not what you're looking at in this, in this environment and the fence would block any headlights from the site. From the parking area.
I'm not sure six feet would be tall enough, because when you come in from the east, every truck is going to be pulling in and up. And it's two hundred and eighty eight elevation as you're coming up. The parking lot's two seventy five, it's going to just shine right over into the neighbors. I think it needs to be more than. Six feet high.
You're exactly right that the fence is not blocking the driveway entrance, nor would a fence block any of the traffic or activity on Bartlett Street. Which certainly exceeds any of the volume of traffic that would be on this driveway. Um, so there's going to be um, headlights on on Bartlett Street, on on local on stirrup. Lane, uh, there'll be, there'll be headlights that continue to to be seen depending on where you are. Um, and I don't think there there's a a. A wall that's going to block every single potential headlight from any vehicle on the road.
No, I'm not trying to block the road, trying to block coming up your access drive. Sorry, and the fence didn't go all the way up to the building either, like there was a space on sketch.
Because the the fire department requires access around the building.
Could there be a game?
That would be up to the fire department.
Yeah.
Well, I think lights one thing and sound is another thing, so the what I like about the sound, some type of sound wall is to also limit the noise. Not just whatever lights are coming in there. But to me, a lot of what we just looked at looked like glorified fences. It didn't look like something overly. Difficult.
Right.
I mean, not that I'm not trying to pick out what what the solution be, but none of those look like more than a fence and from what I looked at, it's just like maybe it's. Height or something. Six feet, I think our, isn't our minimum fence height now seven feet?
Yep.
Just even in general, that doesn't even meet the minimum requirements of fences in Northborough, so I think six is way undercutting it and it doesn't solve the noise.
I'm gonna, I don't know if anyone wants to talk about it further, should I? I just want to, um, since I have a couple of things up, I was going to share what I had. Get the way it is and then see what the applicant wants to come back with.
Well, let's hold on that for a second so we can at least get through what you're showing here, because I think we have a couple of bullets under here, so we'll come back around to that.
What I added was, um, I had put a fence in my comments that got crossed out along the truck lot. Um, according to our bylaws, seven oh nine oh two oh C five D, which is on page seven eighty eight. Exposed storage areas, machinery, garbage dumpsters, truck loading areas. Utility buildings and structures shall be screened from the view of the abutting properties, streets using plantings, fences and other methods. Um, this whole truck lot shown on this site plan is. At max, two hundred and forty feet from the aqueduct. I think there needs to be some sort of, if they don't want to do a fence, actually, I think it would be better to do a line of trees. Some spruce trees that are evergreens. I also thought that plants along the driveway coming up, there was one, two, three, four, five maple trees. I was thinking those should be replaced with evergreens too, because the maple trees are going to lose their leaves. It's not much of a buffer. That's just my opinion now.
Wait, so we're on the in the mocked up one, there's a note seven zero nine zero three zero doesn't apply to the industrial district. But yours, I'm sorry, am I in the wrong one? Sorry.
Nope, it's the same. Well, I um, replaced all of the um, line items that were crossed out. Because they were things that I had added.
Okay.
So seven oh nine oh three oh had to do with a couple of things. It had to do with the ten foot wide landscape buffer. It also talks about. Seven point oh nine oh two oh talks about exposed storage areas and that does apply to this application. And there is nothing along this the um, truck lot. That buffers it from the aqueduct. So I was asking to add a fence, it was crossed out and so now I'm asking to. Plant a row of six foot tall spruce trees along the truck loading dock. Right now, it's just a whole bunch of wetlands there, so it's it's going to be fully exposed. This is supposed to be a natural buffer.
If I may, I guess I'd like to just maybe get some clarification. On uh, what constitutes buffer and screening, because my understanding from the bylaw is that. Open space, natural vegetated open space. Meets the definition or or is defined as buffer. And so obviously the, you know, the aqueduct and then the land on the other side of the aqueduct uh, is all. Uh, vegetated, natural open space.
Under this. Seven oh nine oh two oh, it actually says shall be screened from view of the abutting properties and streets. Using plantings, fencing and other methods approved by the site plan authority, which would be our board.
So they're talking about a visual buffer there.
Yep, on page seven eighty eight. It's the little d above the.
Can you repeat the section again? What what is?
Sure, seven eighty eight. It is section seven oh nine oh two oh C. Make sure I have the right one, five. C five D. It's under exposed storage areas.
If you're seven eighty eight, it's like the second to last, well, it's the last. Letter, small d.
And so you're you're looking for more buffer than the existing planted treed area. And you're trying to buffer the aqueduct itself.
No, I'm trying to buffer the truck loading dock.
From the aqueduct.
Yeah, or the street. That's what this calls for.
Right, from the street being Bartlett Street at this point, which is.
Right. In abutting properties, which is the aqueduct.
Feet away, right?
No, the aqueduct is at the most two.
Okay, I thought you said in the street.
In the street.
But you're trying to screen it from the aqueduct itself.
Yep. As people are enjoying their biking, they're walking. And and then they'll have the straight view of a truck loading dock area. It's supposed to be a natural area where people relax and walk. But that's the purpose of this, this bylaw right here is to. Screen it from view.
Yeah, I I guess at at this point with the existing, the existing. Treed areas and wetlands that are that are in there. There's a natural area that's grown in between and we're trying not to disturb that. If you want maples to be evergreens, I I think we can work with that.
We had, when we walked the site, we had an overview, like it showed like, I don't know what it was. But it showed that the most of the site has been like cleared and it's scrubby. All the big trees were outside of your property. Whether it was near the high school, whether it was in the neighbor's area, there was no really big. Growth trees in that area, so it's all just weedy scrub. They're really real, there won't be a buffer there.
Yeah, I think historically the site was, you know.
A farm.
Previously a farm or something to that effect, and it was cleared, yeah.
The the other thing, I guess, just going back to what's required under the bylaw. The lead into that section says that a landscape buffer shall be required between abutting uses. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's that's correct.
Yeah.
And the buffer shall be planted with grass shrubs, trees or a combination thereof.
The right place.
Yeah, we're trying to, trying to be reasonable and, you know, it sounds like you definitely want the entire property. Surrounded by, you know, fence or sound walls or. And and that's your preference, so no one can see it from anywhere.
No, it's not that you can't see it, it's just the buffer. You'll still see it, it's gonna be forty feet high.
And I'm not in the building, yeah, so that you can't see anything going on, and I I would, I would, that would make. It look like a prison ground, frankly, and because it would all be walled off from everyone, and it's fairly impractical. I think there's generous buffers around the entirety of the the site, and we're trying to shield. You know, the light and the noise as as you guys have made requests for and, you know, legitimate comments from from neighbors. And trying to do so reasonably.
There are eight trees along an eight hundred foot. On that side of that building, there are eight trees that are probably six feet high along an eight hundred foot building. So that doesn't seem too generous.
Well, there's eight trees along that that driveway edge that you're talking about, right?
There's five, and then you go up further, there's three more. But there's none along the truck lot area. That's all I was, I was just going through the seven oh nine oh two oh and. There's no buffer there, so.
Again, there 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 is a buffer. There's a large existing vegetated buffer. There's not tall trees in that existing buffer is what you're saying.
I think if you drew a section to show the line of sight from the aqueduct to the warehouse, you wouldn't, there wouldn't be much of a buffer.
And and I'm sure if you walk along various points of the aqueduct, there are other things that are visible from the aqueduct.
Yep. They're not under new construction right now, though.
They may not.
Thank you, yeah, that's all. I just wanted to bring it out. I don't want to argue.
Yeah, sure, and and we're, we can certainly work to add add more landscaping. And we could work to, and I think your request about more landscaping on that edge is fine. We we can work with that. And as we said, we're trying to be reasonable and and work with everything we can. What we're not willing to do is wall off the site.
That's not what I was asking.
Well, it seems like in the bylaw, the intent is to screen from view the truck loading area, so. It would just have to be enough to screen. It doesn't sound like the current. Landscaping that accomplishes that, so I guess we just have to figure out what would accomplish that in a reasonable manner.
Again, there's there's a lot of existing vegetation out there, not all of it is tall vegetation. But there's a lot of existing vegetation out there, and the whole area is grown, is is. Planted, we we could seed it with a forest mix on the edge so that you're talking about tall growth. Coming in, it would be over time. So that you can have tall growth. We can't do it into the wetlands, that's not, it's not allowed. I don't think anybody wants to see that. And so the wetlands may never have tall trees in it.
I just think a row of spruce trees, six feet tall. It doesn't have to be side by side because they're gonna grow. We can figure out how far apart they have to be planted if they're six feet tall. If you go back to design review, we have a landscape architect on that.
Well, that that is, that is one of the things when you mention that, that we are trying to avoid and trying to move the process forward and not go backwards. To go back to design review and and to extend the process, and we are, we are trying to work towards some resolution.
Okay, I my idea was six foot tall spruce trees along the truck lot, but I'm sure there's, you can ask a landscape architecture. How far apart they have to be planted. I'm sure they're not right on top of each other because they will grow. I was just planting a screening. It will also help with the sound.
Okay, so it sounds like, though, based on the bylaw, some sort of screening is required there, and it sounds like. Board members' comments on sentiments on the screening or.
I I guess, could I get a better, so there's, obviously, there's a strong objection to this from the applicant, and. I mean, given the scope and the size of the the project, it doesn't seem like it's a big add, especially between the parking lot area for me. And the residential area. I mean, is it, is it a financial thing, is it an aesthetic thing? I'm just trying to understand what your opposition is so strong on is.
In terms of which piece, I'm not sure I'm clear.
I know, so we we got off on, you know, plantings and things like that. I'm still back on the wall. And you you guys are very much opposed to that, you know, doing some structure. Dividing that parking lot from the residential area. And, you know, it is gonna be, there's a, there's some distance there, but it isn't, you know. The site sound is gonna make its way through there regardless, and that's why I think the sound, I'm, I think our intent here is to protect those neighborhoods. Who've already been greatly impacted by the growth on Bartlett Street already. And so I'm, that's my main goal here, is to make sure that we don't impact those neighborhoods. Who've already been greatly impacted. And it it just, to me, this seems like a small ask for the size of this building and the scope and everything, so I, am I wrong? I don't know.
So uh so a fence that goes above probably ten feet tall, maybe eight. Becomes a structure that is a very, very different component. There is a cost, there is an aesthetic, you're gonna. On either side of it, you're gonna definitely see that that structure that is that that big. And so, you know, doing that walls off makes you feel like you're in a prison from the outside. Looking in, you're gonna feel like you're looking at, you know, some sort of secret base or prison wall. When you, when you see it, it's, it's, it's both, you know. A a feasibility of the cost size, but also the aesthetic in the in the end. Is, we don't think either of those are are appropriate for for a parking lot. We we do recognize the noise and the 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 sound and the light concerns, and we are trying to make. Commitments to to do things that we think will help mitigate that. Is it gonna solve every problem in every situation? No, and I think residents, as you said, already hear some of the activity further down the road. You know, in in the industrial district, and that's that's what's here, and we try to leave, I think the requirements. I may have this wrong from the bylaw, we're a fifty foot buffer. We tried to make sure we kept that hundred foot buffer. Which is double the the requirement. Is it everything and is it, you know, make the building disappear? Nope. But we are trying to to work with you and come up with something that's reasonable. We can add some landscaping, we can do. Fencing, but a a sound wall becomes a structure, and I think most of those pictures that that were shown. Were structural, they have intermediate supports, they're solid, they're 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 usually, even if they're vinyl on the. Outside, they're probably concrete inside, and it's a very, very significant undertaking.
More significant than a forty foot high, eight hundred foot length warehouse that's made out of concrete?
Of course not. No, that's why that, that's why that wall itself. Presents a a a a buffer from the residence. Where the residents are to where the truck court is, and that's why that truck court is on the opposite side, the far side from the residence and.
There's still be backup beepers, and it's it's so minor compared to the hundred feet of wall. To put up a fifteen foot. Glorified fence.
It seems like other, these other projects are doing it, so there must be some sort of value, a way to figure it out. It doesn't seem, if all these other projects. Are are able to accommodate that, I don't know why this case would be different, where it can't accommodate that.
If you have a truck dock that backs up to a residential, you know, of residence, I'm I'm sure there are more significant. Walls that are, that will provide separation.
Is it, is there a preference over, is there the berm or a sound wall, or not even the the fifteen foot high berm is of interest?
Well, I don't think the fifteen, the fifteen foot high berm isn't feasible, because then you're you're cutting down. And going further into the existing wooded area to to take down existing trees to build up a berm. And then try to replant it. I don't think that's in anyone's best interest. I think there is a bit of a berm and a cut to keep the parking lot down lower in certain areas, and we certainly want to take advantage of that.
We looked at the berm, like there weren't a lot, it's very scattered trees, it's not like a row of trees, there's a lot of scrub. The berm. Is in certain areas, like I said, it's up seven or eight feet, and then there's no berm at all. I mean, I could go back out or someone can go back out and take pictures, but.
Well, the berm, the berm that's there today, because the parking lot's gonna sit lower than some of the. Some of the areas that are there today.
Yep, the berm will be eight, like seven to eight feet higher than the parking lot. Only in one area, there's a couple hundred feet where it's, it's level.
I'm gonna take one public comment because this hand's been up for a long time, and I know it's in a butter. Jack Wickstead, did you have something you wanted to say there?
Yeah, Jack Wickstead to Sturper Glen, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Appreciate the work that the planning board's putting into this. You know, this is a a hundred fifty thousand square foot building. And I know the Gutierrez company keeps saying that they're making efforts to be respectful for the neighbors, but as far as I can tell. You know, they've made zero efforts really to be respectful to the neighbors. You know, recognizing that this building goes within a hundred feet of residential property, you know, Mrs. Kim is within two hundred and seventy five feet. The parking lot is actually below the residential elevation, so we're gonna be looking, you know, down into this. You know, the Federal Highway Administration does not recognize vegetation as sound buffer. That's why we have sound walls on highways. Because the Federal Highway Administration recognizes that vegetation is not a sound buffer. I don't know how many. Parking spots are in that parking lot, but I think it's around a hundred and fifty, if I'm not mistaken. That's an enormous parking lot. I mean, that alone is a sizable problem for the people who live here. I mean, that hundred fifty parking lot, hundred fifty foot square parking lot is probably what? An acre? And we're gonna have snow plows in and out of there to make sure that it's ready for the business to run. And those snow plows are gonna be plowing in the middle of the night. You know, I think it's really, really, really just unreasonable for the company not to recognize. That the sound of their operation in that parking lot is going to impact the neighbors. We're not asking for much here. We're asking for a sound wall so that we can coexist. You know, the Amazon property at the top of the hill sold for a hundred and fifty million dollars. I mean, this is very valuable warehouse property for this company. And I just think in the grand scheme of this project, that they're just being really, really. Unreasonable about the cost of a couple hundred feet of sound wall so that we can coexist with them. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, thanks, Jack.
Another note too, that I've heard from other neighborhoods near industrial properties is like when the night shift comes in at three o'clock in the morning and. People are in the parking lot talking and you hit your car beeper, beep beep, you know, to lock it. There are a lot of sounds that can happen in a parking lot.
Okay, additional board thoughts on this? So we have two items we're working through. We're talking about the option of either a sound wall or fence. And then we're talking about, if it appears to be required by bylaws, either way, some sort of. Buffer between the or or screening between the loading dock and the. Aqueduct, street, etc. Why don't we start with the fence slash berm slash sound wall? Board thoughts on that?
I I'm in agreement with a fence, whether it's fifteen feet or goes up to, you know, twelve, thirteen feet. I think that that's. A reasonable amount between the residential and the. The building itself. I do think the building does provide some. On the other, the truck side, but again, we also need to provide some barrier between the aqueduct and the visual part, because that is all scrubbed in there.
Okay, so when you say whatever height you listed, is that in your mind, that's a regular fence, not a sound wall?
No, not a sound wall there.
But a fence. Other thoughts?
Which I think will help with some.
Well, I think the wall needs to be impervious. And a, you know, so I think, and like Mr. White said, that once you get to a certain height, it does become structural. And I think it's just the nature of, you know, the size of that. You know. Not being a structural engineer, I don't know where that line is, but. And again, I think to back up mixed, Mr. Wickstead, I think it's a very small ask for the size and scope of this. Project, and also based upon some of the, you know, the other projects that have taken place on that road.
So you're also, you're looking for a fence, doesn't necessarily have to be a fa- a sound wall, but you, the height is important to you or? So you're also, you're looking for a fence, doesn't necessarily have to be a fa- a sound wall, but you, the height is important to you or?
With the height, the height and and being impervious, you know, so that, you know, it's gonna block light, it's gonna block sound. Um, I don't know what that is, but it, you know, I think it's so, you know, I don't know what the difference is between a wall at twelve to fifteen feet is between that and a sound wall. Uh, if there's such a difference.
Okay, other thoughts from board members on that?
I I just, I I wanna make sure that that we're setting the right expectation here, so. Um, you know, a forty foot high building is gonna block just as much sound as a forty foot high sound wall. Right? So the beep beep beeps of the truck, whether that's gonna, that's gonna be blocked by the building, blocked by the sound wall or not blocked at all. Um, that's, you know, I don't think you're gonna change that. Same thing with the light coming from the trucks, but I do think the parking lot. Needs some type of, you know, buffer for, you know, incidental sounds like like Mr. Wickstead said. Um, especially at night, um, you know, three AM, somebody comes out and, you know, unlocks their car. Um, you know, that's gonna be heard. I'm not, I I also understand that, you know, where the sound wall is a structure, especially when you get a little bit of wind. Um, so that's, that's gonna really have to be built up. I don't know if that's really the answer, but. Um, I I think we really need to concentrate on the parking lot and the noises in the parking lot. Because you're not gonna change the noises in the distribution side. You know, whether it's, like I said, a forty foot sound wall is gonna be damp and just as much sound as a forty foot building.
Okay, so I don't think the, so correct me if I'm wrong, my, I'm only thinking this is for the parking lot area. Were the board members thinking this was carrying across the distance of the building or just the parking lot?
So I think there's two components, right? So there's the buffer zone in the front. Um, which which candidly is not as important to me as a buffer zone or something, a barrier between that parking lot and. The residential area. Um, you know, if there's some give and take, I would give a little bit on the the front buffer. Then on the the side to the residential area.
So, but the fence piece, whether it's a fence or sound wall, we're, so forget the um, buffer in between the aqueduct. Just in terms of the fence piece or whatever that looks like, where is the board only talking about the parking lot? Not the full distance of the building. It was not my understanding that we're talking about the full distance of the building.
Yeah, yes, me, it's just the parking lot, and I think to Amy's earlier point, there is where there's that um, retention basin. The the fence only went up so far, I I think, you know, if we can work out a deal with the uh, fire chief. Of having some sort of a gate there, because that literally is an open corridor. There's nothing breaking that up between the parking lot and the residential area.
Okay, then the separate component was the front area, the visuals um, screening piece of it. So Bill, does that um, im- impact what you had in mind, or you, do do, were you envisioning a? Of even a greater wall for the building, or you also are just thinking parking lot?
I'm just thinking about the parking lot, like I said, I I think, you know, where they have the trucks going in on the backside of that building. You know, there's no residence on that side, so you've got the forty foot building there blocking whatever sound you can, whatever light you can. Um, keep in mind too, that I was just looking at the dimensions and the um. The building actually goes down ten feet from where the aqueduct is. So as far as the street is concerned, that's almost, you know, to the top of the loading docks. If you're looking straight out from the street, you'd only be seeing the top of the loading docks. Because you you'd be looking at the level of the aqueduct.
Okay, so what what's the elevation in the front there?
The aqueduct was it, is it two eighty six and the building itself is a two seventy six? So there's actually a downhill from the aqueduct to the building itself, so the visible visibility that Amy was mentioning from the street. Is reduced a little bit by the aqueduct itself.
Okay, Amy, does that change your?
No, because you can still see it from the aqueduct. And that's a budding, that's a Northborough Trail that's open for the public. And I do think there should be a buffer there of trees. And I do think there should be a sound wall in the parking lot, and I think it's. A fence that just like Anthony said is impervious.
When you say sound wall, it's it doesn't necessarily, if it's an impervious fence at X height, is that a sound wall to you or?
As long as it qualifies, that's what it looked, when I looked at those pictures. Some of those pictures look vinyl, it might be thicker, it probably has to be thicker to like be structurally sound. But as long as it's impervious and sounds are not getting through and light is not getting through. Then I think that would solve the problem, at least he- help a little bit. I don't think it's gonna solve the problem, I don't think anything will.
And Millie, your um, thoughts, you did, you were um, in favor of the visual screening in the front? So for me, I think, I do think we need some sort of screening there, because that is one of our trails that go in front of there. Um, I'm not married to what that looks like, but I think there needs to be beyond just. But just even if it's, it sounds like Bill, you brought up a good point that maybe it's not um, that we have a little bit of distance covered, but. If we if we round that out, I think it'd be um, an improvement there for the wall with a parking lot. But to me, none of what I'm looking at looks more than a glorified fence, so. I don't know if there's a way that we could, you know, if it's if it's five. Feet in width of concrete, I'm not looking for the applicant to go over the top of something, but what I'm seeing looks like a glorified fence, so. I don't know if there's a way, maybe we can work through. I don't know, a- anyone that, Lori, do we, do we have, know any other projects in the area that has used a sound fence? That we could kind of get a read on what that looks like, so we understand how significant it is or isn't?
I know of none. The only sound walls I'm familiar with are the ones adjacent to highways.
The hack, the in in Hop-Holston, they're doing a thirty foot high earthen berm with a fence on top and two hundreds trees. Because they're near a residential neighborhood. So that's what they're using for their sound walls at earthen burn.
Okay, so, uh, but okay, so putting that aside, on the applicant's side, what is, how far are you willing to go? What's your?
So, so if if we're. Understanding where we're at and uh, uh, gonna use that reference sketch as reference. As we understand where you want the the fence or the wall, whatever we're gonna refer to it as. Um, is around the parking area, I think, you know, we're committed to doing a a solid fence. That's what we've indicated is that it would be solid. Um, uh, in the case of like sound wall, I don't know that it meets sound wall specifications. But we're talking about a solid fence so that we keep, we we keep, you know, screening and in place. Um, we can look at at how high we can reasonably go. With that, I understand, you know, I think it was Amy who said there's a seven foot minimum in town. Um, uh, and we can, we can uh, try to uh, increase the size of that fence. And then I think in how we looked at it, we thought your request was some more screening along the edge of Bartlett Street. And we were proposing adding planting there, but there's really a, there's a line of existing trees that we don't plan on disturbing, and we would. Uh, retain, we would uh, increase the plantings along the uh, edge of the. Um, driveway into the site so that you get that more of that buffer view from or buffered view. From the aqueduct. Um, to increase the plantings there and commit to the solid panel fence.
So Amy, if you stop sharing for a second, because I just want to. Reference, um. Let's see. I think this is the, um, is this the latest reference sketch right here that I'm looking at?
I believe that's the one and only.
Okay, great, so, so this is the area that we're looking, talking about a fence, and then we talked about possibly like some sort of gate here. Um, what is the elevation, what elevation are we looking at here that we would pick the height? So in terms of like, rather than just throw out a number, like whether it's seven or fifteen or whatever. Um, Amy, what made you pick fifteen when you were thinking about fifteen?
I I did, when I first thought of it, I knew, but this is two hundred and eighty eight feet, this is two seventy five. And I was trying to block some of the lights from the cars coming. Up here and the trucks coming up here, I picked fifteen. I can't remember, I had it the thought out in my head when I thought of it like a month ago.
And then for the applicant, you you picked six, so was there something tha- that made you pick six that you and your pet, your experience?
We're looking at screening that parking lot from adjacent views from from uh, providing a barrier there. Um, and so most of your cars and your people are gonna be six feet or lower, the parking lot is. Uh, as Amy said, ranges from like two seventy four to two eighty, and some of the land around it with the berm. Is up around two eighty seven, two eighty six, two eighty three, so you've got, you know, three to five, seven, eight. Feet it burned up in some of that area and you put a fence on top of that. Um, you're you're creating, you're creating some uh, some barrier and you're not gonna, certainly not gonna see. What's going on in there, and hopefully that's gonna shield a lot of the sound too.
Okay, and then for the screening, um, Amy, which area are you referring to for, I know you can't, yeah, so you're talking about?
I just have a question on the fence, like the way the red fence is written, that's not following the berm, because the berm like.
Just a generic line ju- at this point, it can follow, yeah.
Cause I I didn't know if you were planning, if it was fifteen feet would be on the parking lot, but if it was following the berm. Then there were places that I thought you only needed like seven feet. It all depends on which route you're gonna take. Um, there's a bunch of trees as you cross the aqueduct. There's five trees right there, there are maples, I was hoping they could be evergreens, because those will be losing their leaves. And then as you go up further. Along the truck lot, that's what our bylaw calls for, is the truck lot area to be screened. That whole area there up top, there's nothing along the edge.
There's no new plantings, it's all existing, whatever's in the wetlands and that existing ground between the aqueduct.
Okay, so Amy, you're you're up in here now?
Yep, and and down a little further where there's also another opening, see, there's like five trees. Then there's one, then you could add a couple more in there, and then you could add some along the truck lot.
Okay, so primarily, we're right in here. And so the true, what is, this is a bump out of, what is this, just extra, so the trees kind of that we have planned are gonna stop, and then this is. Is this primarily the section you're talking about, Amy, this empty section?
It looks like a guardrail, is that a guardrail?
It is.
Okay, so looking at that, um, I mean, this does, this does seem suddenly empty, I'm not sure why. You thought, um, I'm sorry, just, um, Mr. Weiss, you thought this was um, existing vegetation here?
Right, there's, there's a lot of existing vegetation, and I don't think we want to be removing vegetation to plant vegetation. We we, you know, if the area is not disturbed, we don't want to disturb it, um, but. I understand uh, Amy's point about uh, um. You know, the existing vegetation is lower growth.
Yeah, it's kind of what you see in the picture there to the right, where there's very little, it's definitely scrubby.
Yeah, that picture is of the aqueduct area, which is the trail section, but yeah, I understand what you're saying. A lot of that area is kind of open field, kind of.
Okay, so whether it's prescribed as six trees or whatever the case, are you open to doing something here?
Yeah, I I think David Robinson, our engineer and site site guy is on, would we have a problem planting in there? I I don't see any grading, so it's not an area of disturbance very much.
I'd have to look at it closer, um, you know, if I think if you held the landscaping pretty tight to the back of the guardrail. As you said, um, there's not a a graded slope except for the right hand side there, that might be an issue. But uh, for the left half, um, the, you know, I I think you could. I'd have to look at it further, you know, depending on the size of the plantings, um, and the grade of that existing slope. I I don't think.
I think we could, we can certainly look at at adding more plantings along that edge.
Alright, back to the fence piece, it sounds like the primary concern is figuring out a height that is. Adequate, that isn't over excessive to create. Or to um, in- uh, install, or whatever the case, but at least blocks sound and light. Ri- in a reasonable manner, so. We have a couple of different options, it sounds like a, number one, a berm is not one of them, is that true so far?
Well, there is a berm that's there, but we're not getting fifteen or thirty feet, you're getting, you know, somewhere. Between, what was it, five, seven or eight feet?
Yeah, seven, eight, yeah.
It's eight at the maximum.
Eight at the max, yep.
And so, even getting up for higher than that is not, um. It's too difficult, you have to pull inland, and it sounded like building on that was not an option, okay. So then we have, um, if it's impervious and if we agree on height. Um, Amy, are you bound to it being specifically a sound wall, or does that sound like? Um, that would accomplish what we want to accomplish?
I think the fence has to be impervious, like some of the fences, like if you go to, like say, in our yard. The vinyl fences have spaces in between the panels, but what was shown on the sound. Wall fence is it's, there's no space there, so it's like impervious, so like if you poured water through it, it couldn't get through.
So in experience and development, do you, do you know of fences that have that kind of impervious quality that would solve this without necessarily?
I asked around and I was told it could be done, even just even from local landscapers. Could create a fence where there is no. Um, pervious. Areas. And the reason why I was thinking fifteen feet high too, was because when the trucks come up from the road, a lot of them have those lights on the top. They're like thirteen feet high up off the ground, the on top of the cab, they have those yellow lights. So they're gonna be shining coming up and down the road all night long. Unless they're hours of operation and they're not allowed to go up all night long.
I think the problem with a fifteen, one of the issues with the fifteen foot high fence in. In addition to, you know, the visual impact is, um. That there are areas along that uh, long face of the parking lot. That are within or very close to, say, the thirty five foot uh, no disturb buffer. And so when you install something that's that tall, it's, the wind load against it is gonna be such that it's gonna require. A substantial footing, and it's gonna require more disturbance in that area. So I think just from a practical standpoint of not wanting to um, get into. That buffer area and and disturb the wetlands there, a fence of that of that height is, just doesn't seem practical. Or feasible, really.
What about building up the farm, you know, the berm is seven feet max, what if the berm gets built up to seven feet all the way across? Not fifteen feet, and then you put the seven foot fence on top of that.
Uh, I I think there might be, you know, an area and 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 Dave Robinson can can chime in here, I think. Along the short side of the fence, um, there may be an opportunity to to berm that area uh, up. And I say that because the the uh, the wetlands are are far in that location. Uh, and so I think.
I think we're actually already there on that edge. Because it, yeah, I see it's two. Because yeah, I see it's two eighty, two eighty-seven. Looks like the grades were already there.
Yep.
Closer to the warehouse where it's level.
Yeah, if I could real quick, uh as you can see, the wetlands kind of jog in near where we have that little landscaped area that juts into the parking lot with the two trees. If you put, if you start to grade out a berm there, uh, you're gonna be chasing that slope down that steep existing slope uh into the wetlands, into the twenty-five-foot no disturb. Um, and don't forget, there's riverfront in there, there's existing an H E S P, and we're also proposing part of our C R area.
Right, but David, David, just to jump in on that as well and just looking at the plan, uh if you zoom in on that, there's a you're up at two eighty-three at the top of the berm and the parking lot's down at two seventy.
Six. Yeah, so you have that, you have that seven to eight-foot buffer.
You're you're, again, you're you're almost there. It's gonna weave a little bit up and down, but um it looks like you're you're, you know, between a seven-foot fence and a seven-foot berm, you're there. Where it gets a little difficult is because of the access around the back of the building, we're not gonna have a berm because you, we have to maintain access.
What about the parking spaces closest to the building? Because you have a hundred and fifty parking spaces, but you only are required to have a hundred and one. What if you cut out those parking spaces near the building and then you build the berm up there with the fence?
Yeah, from a, from a usability and we we've kind of gone through this and and pressed users and and the people that represent the the tenants, um, the the number of parking spaces is really critical. Um, but I understand the concern with, you know, the two or three parking spaces that are right there at the end of the fence. We can, we can we can look at that.
So, but either way, this needs to be open for the, that was the fire chief had that requirement? So you can't have the berm. What I'm understanding is being said is there can't be a berm there no matter what.
Right, there can't be a berm, but I I believe what was just being asked is whether or not you eliminate the parking spaces, there at least no car pulling into a space with headlights shining.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, yep. Okay.
All right. You wouldn't want a car parked there anyways because the fire trucks have to be able to get through. So it's fire access.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't think they'd be coming in that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's a fire truck access. It's just a a a person access route and a equipment and materials. But again, yeah.
Okay, so how do, how does the board feel about a blend of berm and fence? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think it would work. We'll see what they can come back with.
Anyone not like that idea? Uh, for the applicant, does that sound something that's more doable to split the berm and fence? Well, I guess you have to check this, um, Mr. Robinson brought up this area. It sounds like it may be there almost, but.
It looks like we're there already with the grading. It's it's just that it may not be exactly if you're adding the two together. Exactly, it it, the fence may go up and down a little bit as you go around with the grading, but it's pretty darn close to seven and seven, fourteen feet around.
Okay, why don't we, um, as we head up on nine, why don't we take a ten-minute break?
I just want to ask one quick question before we go while we're talking about this. So it sounds like you're talking to tenants and you're gonna need a hundred and fifty spaces, so that makes the fence even more important. Um, who are, who are your possible tenants since you have a possible use? What type of?
We're, we're not talking to tenants directly. We're talking to people who represent tenants, the brokers, um, and they're telling us that the requirements for the market is to have the hundred and fifty spaces, which I think is within your, you know, the town's uh bylaw requirements of one space per thousand square feet. So that's what we're told in terms of marketability and and ability to to bring a tenant to the building. So we don't have a user.
I've gone down to three oh one a couple times and it's amazing how much parking is there and there's always like ten cars, like.
Yeah, I agree.
Sad that you have to put so much parking there if you're really not gonna use it, because then you could do a lot more and have a lot more protection with um landscaping.
Okay, why don't we um take a ten-minute break, let everyone refresh and then come back at um ten past nine to continue our conversation? So that sound good? All right, nine, ten, we'll be right back. Okay, it looks like we are getting everyone back. Millie, are you back on?
I am.
Okay, great. Laurie, Laurie's there. Okay, great. Looks like the applicant is heading back. Scott, are you back on?
I am here.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, so um we're back. Um, it sounds like for these next couple of items, we we may not have the final language, but we seem to have some sort of general consensus. Do we, do we have some sort of solution, possible solution at hand?
Sounds big for us to me.
So we can go back if you want. So hold on, I'll share my screen again. Okay, so this should be the same thing we're just looking at. Um, we talked about in this area so if possible, seven foot berm, seven foot, excuse me, seven-foot fence. Um, consideration of if these parking spots can go or not. Didn't sound like that was a critical item, but that was something of consideration. And then looking over in this area, some sort of um screening over here. That's where I believe we last left.
Or a gate there, like.
Well, we couldn't put the gate because I couldn't, you can't build the berm there.
Yeah, right.
Uh, well, Laurie, if the fire chief, well, no, he's not gonna climb up a berm to get in there. So I guess he wants access specifically. Is that what the conversation was about? He wants, what is not necessarily a truck, but he wants access in there.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we'll have a berm there. I think what we talked about is we're gonna look to uh remove three spots from that location. Three parking spots.
Okay.
And if you do that, can you put in the gate then and he can walk through the gate? Because that would stop the sound.
So, yeah, I I don't know the answer to that. Um, Israel, do you think that is something the uh I don't think would be receptive to a gate there? That's.
The the only, in my experience, the only types of gates that I've seen to to. The only, in my experience, the only types of gates that I've seen to, to sort of restrict access are things that, you know, are like bars that either go up or can be, you know, crossed through. So yeah, something I don't, I doubt that the chief will be open to, you know, a kind of fence that a truck would have to burst, you know, bust through if they had to get back there or obviously, the truck wouldn't be going there, but equipment and firefighters, for example, so.
Right, they're not gonna climb up a berm.
I mean, maybe if we could just get feedback from the chief, I think that would be reasonable.
So Laurie, would you mind communicating this to the fire chief? Is that something we can do? Or are you, if you're already?
Sure, no problem.
Hey Carrie, I could chime in a little bit. I've talked to the chief in the past about gates and things, and it's really not his preference to have something that his firefighters have to unlock or open up or could be blocked somehow. What they're trying to get there, I believe, is firemen's access. They may be pulling a hose, they may be carrying equipment, and the quicker they can get around the building, the better they can do their job. I believe his preference would not to be have a gate there, if it's at all possible.
Okay.
So about. Maybe the question becomes then, do we have to ask the chief how wide of an area does he need to get through there?
For that, or could you possibly, and I don't know the elevation there, but could you just follow the contour of that right in that, you know, way where the, whatever we're calling it, road or thruway? Could you just extend it and follow it just until you get to the building?
Curve it around?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
What do you mean?
It does do that.
Uh, no, the walkway does, but the fence doesn't. Curve the fence around to block, yeah.
Exactly.
Yep. There's also access that's required, maintenance access that's required around that berm.
Yeah, that, that area is not a berm to the same area. That is a detention pond, so, yeah. Let us look at that, because we could, we can gate the access for the, for the maintenance, for the detention bond. I believe that's fine, as long as we don't block the fire department.
Oh, God. Okay, so, sorry Fred.
The fire chief also is adamant about snow removal operations need to maintain that open at all times. So they've got to have a place to put the snow when they clear that pathway, if you will. So the fence can't inhibit the snow removal of that area as well, so. There's a couple of factors to consider if you're gonna extend. I think extending the fence a little ways may be fine, but you need to be cognizant of the snow removal process as well.
Would you be pushing the snow into that? You're basically pushing it into that retention area anyways, wouldn't you? I mean, that would.
Not, not from the parking lot. That's not allowed. It's a, it depends on the snowfall. Actually, it could be something done with a sweeper. It could be something done with a snow blower, but it really shouldn't be stored in the basin itself.
Right, not from the parking lot anyway, right Fred?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
I guess my point is you could, the snow wouldn't be something that would inhibit doing something there, whether you gated it or whatever to get to that retention area.
No, what I was referring to is the fence might prohibit the proper removal of the snow.
From the thruway.
Yes, from the pathway that they need to maintain for the fire department.
I hear you.
Okay, so we have, it seems like we have some sort of consensus with those two items. Um. So whoops, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second. Amy, did you have anything else there, or can I go back to sharing what we were looking at?
I think there was just one last thing. And then you can go back to sharing, because these were all the conditions that I had put on. Um. Just go down. And the, I think it agreed to it was modify the site plan for, add a total of ten, ten foot evergreen trees, five to the east side, five to the west. It was just a small addition, but they're okay with it.
Oh wait, so this was in the markup? Or so are you saying that oh, so does the no in all caps means that you're actually not okay with it? I couldn't tell. This was just marked in red in my markup.
No, that comment was, that did not apply. We've already addressed that previously, so.
And the, and the, the comments in caps were just comments. It's not commented off to the side as you have it. You know, it does per 709303. Yeah, it's just a comment statement, but we have it in there anyway. The question really is, on that front, is whether, you know, when looking at the vegetation along Bartlett Street that isn't being disturbed, I'm not sure that there's a lot of places to, I mean, we can add trees in there, but I'm not sure you need a lot of that. There's, there's a lot of existing trees along the edge, and some of it's pretty scrubby. You have to pick that out to plant in, you know, plant some trees. We can do it. We're, we're ready to do it. That's.
Amy, did you have something specifically in area in mind that?
No, because as you get further to the east, there's a lot of trees down there, but right around the driveway area is where it's pretty wide open, like we showed on the site plan. So just adding some trees to the east and the west would add more of a buffer.
Okay.
And they already agreed that they would do it, so.
Okay, so can, do you want me to go back? Is that all for you, Amy? Okay. All right, so the next one, it looks like no edits to the erosion. Laurie, it looks like you had a comment of this one. Was this already, was this already submitted? Or Fred was, oh, were you just, was your comment just related to whether or not Fred would be the one to certify this, or?
So Fred was gonna double check to see who submitted the statement.
Okay, so this is just part of the submission, then? We just need to verify? Or it looks like no edits to it either way? Okay. No edits to the next one. No edits to hours of operation related to construction. Now, this one, I was actually curious why you removed this one. The, so you've removed the line about construction equipment should be, just have silencing, etc. Curious to hear more on why you removed that.
It, it's really just because we don't control every piece of equipment that's on the site. We'll certainly comply with the noise bylaws and will include, you know, equipment to be, to be reasonably muffled and, but I, I'm actually not familiar with skirts are, and and so, you know, we'll certainly conform with the, the bylaw, but I've not encountered any such requirement like mufflers and skirts before, and not even sure I know every piece of construction equipment comes equipped with that kind of equipment.
So Laurie, we put this on the high school decision, correct?
Correct.
And so what, was this something that you had recommended at the time, or have contacts for, or?
I think this was one of Amy's suggestions.
Right, I took, I took it off of other warehouses that have been built, and they had construction and equipment, shall be outfitted with silencing equipment. And then we added it to the high school, and they didn't care. I was told, I asked a couple people about it, that it's pretty normal to have on construction equipment.
Um, let's see. So what we're trying to accomplish here is to make sure that there's not excessive noise during construction. So, do we have instances where we can accomplish this? Is it just through our noise by law, or? Thoughts from the board on this one?
I know, like on cars, they're affected, and they have to have, you know, mufflers and everything else on them. Aren't the, aren't these vehicles, don't they follow the same for DOT? I mean, as long as they follow DOT regulations, I don't know that we have anything else we can say about it on a town level.
Other board thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I'm not really that familiar with these requirements, so I, I'm assuming just following what DOT requirements would be, would be expected.
Attorney Dineshki, is there anything you can think of that would help achieve what this particular condition is, which is really just making sure that we don't have all of a sudden construction noise that's you know, excessive noise coming from the trucks, or anything that they're building there?
I'm sure. I think the issues have been noted, and that if the language is to comply with the applicable regulatory provisions, that to me would be more encompassing than specifying particular equipment that may or may not be included on every vehicle or piece of construction apparatus that could conceivably be at the site.
Okay.
So I think this, this is another example probably of the editing process that I spoke of earlier. It seems to me that the representation from the applicant is to comply with whatever is the applicable regulatory scheme, and I think we could certainly modify the language to match that.
Could we include some sort of language that just says if there is excessive, that the, at least the residents have a mechanism to help get mitigation for, through, whether it's the police or whoever? Does that make sense or not?
Something that is perhaps implicit, but you could include as maybe a general provision here or elsewhere is the, or requirement rather, to have the ability of residents to report during the activity that the mitigation is not effective, and to have a response prepared by the contractor, etc., to address those concerns. In other words, a notice and response provision.
Yeah.
So, does anyone feel strongly about keeping this language?
I just think if there's a way, something somewhat enforceable to mitigate a problem if one arises, that it's just, you know, part of the site plan.
So this one maybe can be labeled for Attorney Dineshki's edit too. Like you said, he's gonna go through them all.
Okay. And for the applicant, it sounds like that's fine, taking that out, but we're just trying to figure out some way to fine tune that a little bit, so that if there is some sort of issue, that there's a mechanism to fix it. Without being as prescriptive as mufflers and skirts, etc.
Right, and, and I appreciate the, the comment and for everyone's benefit. I mean, obviously, the first condition is that we comply with all the town codes and regulations and everything, which are enforced, I believe, by the zoning enforcement officer, is the building inspector, and if anyone does have a complaint, I think if not to call Laurie or Fred, be to call the building inspector, and that would be relayed to us, and we have to comply. If we're out of compliance, we need to correct the situation. I think that is, I think as Attorney Dineshki said, that's implicit in, you know, your decisions anyway, but as you get more, more explicit about that process, we understand that.
Okay. So this one looked fine, the dumpster. The only change here was as needed. I was also curious as to why you wouldn't just have that on site in general.
Well, it's just when work first begins, until you have some, some actual ongoing work, you may not have a, a portage on onsite. Once you have a building in place, there may be inside restroom services available. There, you don't need a portage on, onsite any, any longer, but you may still be under construction at that point. So it's really just an as needed, is the idea, this is, as you used the term just a moment ago, Madam Chair was, you know, prescriptive. We just don't want to say, okay, the job is, the last six months, there's a restroom inside the building, but we have to maintain a portage on outside, because our, our approval says we have to.
About it. Okay, anyone care about, any board members oppose? Okay.
Nope.
Um, similar, oh, go ahead. Does someone have something? No, okay. This was a small change too, but just curious as to why the water truck was changed to shall be available instead of shall be present. Any logic behind that change?
Same exact kind of process is that you know, this sort of implies that a water truck is just sitting there, waiting all the time, and we certainly want to have the water truck available if there's a dust issue or blasting, and, and we want to be able to have it responsive, but there, there's some times where they're onsite, and then they're at another site, and then they come back, and this, the present just implies it's, it's sitting there even when not in use.
Okay, any issues for board members on that change?
I do not.
Okay. Looks like the next section, prior to issuance of a building permit, looks like nothing there. Water and soup.
Carrie, can we go back to the water truck for a second?
Oh yeah, sure.
I, I do sort of have, have an issue with that, and, and the only reason why is one of the things we've been talking about all along is how close you are to residential areas. Now, come springtime, summertime, fall time, people are gonna want to be outside. And if there's any dust kicked up, you know, if, if the truck isn't there to put the water on the dust, then it's gonna get kicked up, and it's gonna get, you know, into their yards, into their faces during construction, because you're doing it during the day, which is when people want to get out. So I'm a little concerned about that, being so close. If, if you were, you know, if, if your adjacent property was an industrial property, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but your adjacent properties are residential properties, and you've already identified that, you know, they're 200 yards away. So I'm a little concerned with that one.
So, so, and I appreciate that if, if it's, you know, the, the difference in, in the text as written is when earth movement or blasting activities occur at the project site, a water truck shall be present. You know, period. If it's lightly raining out, a water truck shall be present onsite. If it's, you know, cold and not dusty, or if the ground's already wet, we, under the term, the water truck should be present, the water truck has to always be present, regardless of the actual conditions that are in place there, and that, that's, that's part of the reason changing it to to available, because there aren't, whenever there's earth moving activities, there's not always gonna be a need for a water truck. So how do we, I, I don't want to have the obligation of having a water truck sitting there 24/7. Well, it's not 24/7, 7/7. You know, if, if a water truck isn't needed. We, we understand your concern, so it's really just how do we work the language? So it's not a condition that, that doesn't mean what it, you guys want it to be.
So maybe.
And I would also, I would also say that, you know, if you continue that sentence, there isn't a period there, and it says, and water shall be sprayed onto the ground. Right? So you can't have water being sprayed onto the ground if the truck is only available and not present. So I, I would think if you wanted to change it to available, you would have changed the rest of that sentence. You can't, you can't put water on the ground on a truck that's only available and not present.
So. As frequently as necessary.
As frequently as necessary. To minimize dust.
What if you say water truck shall be present when conditions? Require it or warrant it, because if it, so it sounds like what you're saying Scott is that when it rains, there's no need for it, because that, the conditions. Solve the problem, there's no need for a water.
Right.
Would that help?
So we, we can do that, a water truck will be, you know, present when conditions. Dust mitigation, sure, sure.
I do think though, if it runs into a problem, it needs to be present all the time, like there needs to be some sort of. Because I agree with Bill and we have a lot of dust problems with sites around town. And that dust really covers their houses and their yards and. I'd be concerned with anything. That's again, subjective or where we think well, it's needed and they think well, it's not needed. So I don't know how you get around that.
Well, if there's a similar to the other one, if there's a complaint. Would Bob go down and say, all right, you guys need to have the water truck onsite, this is getting out of hand, like is that the process?
Yes, that's typically the process, so we would re, we, we would receive a complaint. And then we would investigate. And if we weren't to agree that there's a problem, we would tell them that they had to uh, bring the water truck. And immediately erase the dust.
I know from some of these other neighbors, sometimes it's the weekend, so. You know, and they're told, well, someone will come out on Monday or Tuesday, that's just my only concern. I know in the weekend who it would go to the police department.
The, uh, is the school gonna be having a project going on at the same time, do they have these requirements?
Uh, so they're only allowed to work on Saturday. There's no work allowed on Sunday, so. Um, I, I mean, certainly I've received calls on the weekends. Especially if they come through the police department. Which case the, the developer would be whoever the point person is, so usually it's the um. The construction supervisor, they would be notified.
Carrie, I think that, think this might actually fall to myself and or the conservation agent. Who is gonna administer the land disturbance permit, it's one of the things that we would control. Through the post-construction and the during construction activities. It may be something that if they don't wanna keep the water truck onsite, they need to. You know, make sure it can get to the site within a reasonable amount of time when requested to do so. Um, what I wanna avoid is going out to the site and saying you need to, you know, you need to do something about the dust. Cause there are other options besides the water truck, there is calcium chloride that they can put down to help maintain the dust level, so there are some other options. Um, we just tell them they have to deal with the dust, but we don't wanna run into a, a situation where the truck is, you know. Uh, depending on who the contractor is, the contractor could be someone from New Hampshire who has to send to New Hampshire for a truck, so we wanna be able to. Have a appropriate response time for getting that truck onsite, especially if it's a Friday afternoon, say, and. It's the dead of the summer and things are dusty, so. Why don't you leave it open and I'll work with Attorney Deideski, uh, Dineski and, and Lori and we'll come up with some language. I'll make sure that it's similar to what will ultimately be in the land disturbance permit as well. It's typically handled in the earthwork permit also, so. My experience is many times the water truck is onsite, but I can understand their. Concern about having to have it onsite all the time, uh, while activities are happening, so. I think we can work with it, but I would like a chance to. Wordsmith that condition a little bit to be reasonable for both sides.
Okay, does that sound like that would work for everybody? Something that, so obviously meets the goal that it doesn't have to be present all the time, but also something that can be there if there is a problem, does that work for you Scott?
Yeah.
Bill, does that work for your concern?
Yep.
Okay. Great, so, um, let's see, we're back down to the, nothing with the water fee, nothing about the tests. Um, water and sewer services, hydrants look like nothing, uh, nothing significant. Okay, so the change here was not. Um, so buildings shall not use oil for heating purposes is the change. I guess the point was to not use oil, so does that satisfy what we were trying to get at, or are there other things we wouldn't want it to be?
I would defer to Fred, cause that's a groundwater thing where they say not oil. Is there anything else that could be a, usually they say shall be heated with natural gas, because they don't want oil.
I believe that when we went to the groundwater advisory committee initially, the applicant re- agreed that they were gonna heat it with natural gas. Or electricity, um, the, the goal was to avoid oil.
Okay, so they've changed this though to the edit is now, the building shall not use oil for heating purposes, does that accomplish? The goal that this original statement had, as long as they don't use oil, that's really what we cared about?
Yes, yes, I mean, there are only so many options, but. Um, unless they're gonna do solar, in which case I wouldn't have a problem with that either.
Well, are there any other options we don't want, so out of all?
No.
Yeah, as, as Fred just indicated, I mean, that was our thinking too, is we don't wanna be locked into only those two choices, we understand. We don't, you don't, we don't want oil there, so we're, we're agreeable to not oil, but who knows, you know. Ten years down the line, maybe there is a field of solar panels on the roof and that's how you're heating the building.
Got it.
And if somebody says, well, you're not in compliance with the decision, I don't think that's anybody's interest.
Okay. Um, so this next one was changed, um, to be more detailed and, and was stood out to me as last time we. Spent the effort to be more specific, so we narrowed down to gray just to say, let's keep it easy and make it gray, so I'm curious to know, um. What made you bump that out to, um, uh, like the expansion here, that anything for your edit, if you could just clarify?
Uh, so, uh, we, we, we did a couple of things here. Um, in, in our edits where we said it's, it's the, the facade side of the building that faces the residential properties. That was gonna be changed, and the reason we changed it from gray to some other neutral color, I know you guys settled on gray, I'm not sure. Gray is gonna be the least. Ob- obtrusive color and we're, we're happy to go with a, you know, lighter tan, woodish color or. Or something like that, that, you know, blends in a little better than maybe a gray even would.
Okay, so wouldn't that be weird to have one side of the building be gray and the rest be, but I guess the board's concern was. To have like that stark white with the blue strip, if that was the plan to make it that, that just seemed so sharp in.
Yeah.
Is there, would that be a gray on one side and the rest is that white and blue?
Uh, that would be our intent, we, we, we actually, I, we, we think it is stark, we think it's attractive for. As compared to a lot of other, uh. Uh, industrial buildings, we think it's a, it, you know, a. A good, attractive looking building that, that we've delivered, so we, we. We wanted to keep with that appearance and again, the, the side that the residency. Um, we would, uh, use for a di- a different color. I'm sure, uh. Amy will, will talk about the view from the aqueduct as well, but, um. We think it's an attractive building in a neighborhood of, of buildings that look similar and will have a relationship to them.
I was actually gonna say the back towards Stirrup Brook Trail. Not.
Well, that, that, that is the side where the Stirrup Brook Trail is as well.
Yeah, I know, it goes the side where the neighbors are and then the, the trail curves around the back. But I'm, I was fine with the side that the neighbors are at.
Okay, so board thoughts on that?
I'm fine with that.
So, are we, it's just the back of the building that we're addressing, or are we doing it the?
Hold on, I'm gonna just pull this up, I understand too, cause that sounds a little funky to me, and so maybe I'm not understanding what you mean.
Right, I, I would agree that normally we would think that would sound a little funky, except I don't think anybody will actually see. That backside of the building. Um, for the most part, because it is through the woods and, and a fair distance at that point.
So, um, we're talking like anything like facing this way, so from here all the way down, like end to end is the gray and then. Side walls in front is the white and blue, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, and actually, uh, there's a little like dashed, uh, reddish curved line from where we were talking, a little notch at the. Top of your screen, uh, we, we probably weren't gonna. Paint that little notch gray, we'd keep that in, in context with the rest of the building. I do think the trail spurs off a little further from there, but we could, we could include the notch if that's. Makes a difference, again, the, the residential property is. From this view is to the, to the left of, of the, uh, building, uh, to the site there.
Sorry to interrupt, so that section, that one hundred and forty feet, I'm guessing. So that's gonna be very visible from the trail and, and three oh one from that trail, again, very stark. It, it jumps out at you when you walk by on the trail, and I don't know if that. Could be, I mean, as long as those front facing ones towards the parking lot and the truck bays. Or, you know, whatever your fancy blue stripe, and then the remaining be, you know, more the natural color.
So you're even saying here, Anthony, is that what that?
Yeah, because that's really, that literally is, that's facing the trails as well.
So you're, you're okay with this side in the front being white or whatever the pleasure. But then from here and then facing backwards, if we could do that gray.
That would be my preference.
Does something like that work?
I think we can find a way to work that, that side out as well. Yeah, that, that's where we start feeling like it might get into that little funky, uh, element where you're gonna see different sides of the building. Like to sort of look where that trail goes in that, that area to see. That component.
Okay. So we, we have. What is this, this is a guardrail here?
Yeah, I mean, that's the access around the, the, the back that for the fire department, the little round circular. Things.
But there's nothing like, so is your point, like if you're coming from this way, you'd see both sides of the building?
Yeah, I mean, you're not really coming that way.
Yeah, I mean, those two sides are basically facing, you know, the trail area, Stirrup Brook. Not something that's somebody, unless you're standing on a trail, would you, you, you wouldn't see it otherwise.
Yeah, and I, I'm just not sure how visible from the brook it is or the trail along there, because it's, you know, sort of. Heads off in sort of different. Uh, angles at that point. Yeah, we just don't want it to, to, you know, Madam Chair, your point at the beginning, we just don't want it to end up looking. Funny, so, uh. Uh, we thought we were addressing the, uh, the primary concern of making the backside sort of blend away.
Well, so my view, I definitely think whatever faces the residence is most important to me, I do, um. Share that concern though, Anthony, when you, you see that white through the woods is they really stands up. I just don't know if that's the case, if you actually would see.
If you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you look at where three oh one is in relation to that. And I can tell you, you can, you can see through one really well from Stirrup Brook. Um, definitely where that hundred and forty feet side is, is gonna be very visible from the trail.
Okay, so it sounds like that may be like one component, we continue to fine tune, I think. Um, I'm not looking for you to have to go back to design review, I don't know if anyone else has that, I see that was. Added here as well, does, did any board member feel otherwise?
No, they're only advisory, so I think we can, um, make the decisions here on the site plan. But I did have a concern with the other neutral color, cause I Googled neutral colors and it says beige, gray, but then it says black and white, so. I don't like how any neutral color can be anything. So I mean, I think it should be, shall be gray or.
I think we can, I think we can agree to, um, add language that says it won't be black.
Or white.
Or white.
Right on the front.
Or, or, yeah.
Well, you could say like brown or, or beige or tan. Shall be gray, beige, tan, if that's what you're planning on, like you don't want red, blue, white, black. Black might even blend better, but. I just, any, if you leave it open to other neutral color, that could be anything.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't have interpreted, uh, black or white as a neutral color, but. If, if it says so on the internet, it.
Right, it must be true. Put them together, you'll get gray.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so I think in spirit, we agree on, um, most of what's here, nobody's looking to do the neutral color as a. Black or white offshoot, nobody's looking to go back to design review. Um, we just need to figure out if there's some way to kinda, if there's some sort of view here to the trails, can we do something there? Um, and then keep it white on, this is fine, this is fine, whatever the case. Does it sound like we're pretty much there overall?
Are you gonna change the wording, the other neutral color? Cause I know it's easy to say, but I, when I first was on the planning board, there were so many times where. They're like, oh no, we would never do that, but it's not in writing, and then two months later you drive down the road and say, oh my gosh. They said they'd never do that.
So in making this edit, what was neutral in your mind?
Yeah, again, uh, you know, we thought that, uh, uh, you know, beige or tan or something might work. Yeah, that, that was really the other, so, you know, it's really a, a gray or a, a. You know, beige or tan color.
Alright, so maybe we just do gray, beige, tan, keep it.
If you think of like what bark on a tree looks like, it's typically, it's gray. That's why I think gray came up.
Yeah, depending on the season.
Okay. Um, the next one, so I'm gonna stop there. Okay, um, so, the, so the next, oh, I'm not sharing anymore. So this, I think you removed methods of construction is exceed the authority of zoning, um. I assume that's true, Attorney Dineski?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, the zoning act does, uh, limit its reach and does preclude. Uh, building construction methods essentially reflecting that we have the state building code.
Okay, so it looks like that comes out. Um, let's see, the next one is fine. Okay, this one, um. Was with the sign, so Lori, I don't know if you, I had asked if Bob had confirmed, is this true that we don't? It's not a part of our. Site plan review? This pre-standing sign permit?
So typically, the review of signs is part, a standard that most communities, uh. Look at as part of site plan review. I can, I can double check, I can't really remember. It's actually in our rules and regs and I don't have that document with me right now, does somebody else? The rules and regs that we just modified in October, I thought we included signs.
I thought we did.
I thought that, yeah, I think we included that signs would be reviewed as part of site plan approval, but I can verify and get back.
Okay, but overall, um, your, the applicant's edits are, um, related to. But what's the, um, part of this one, for you removed any modi- major modification, et cetera, so just logic behind that one?
Uh, where are you?
Um, Q, well, I, I don't, on your copy, it might be Q, but on this one, it's R, we're just one off. Um, Q. Well, I, I don't, on your copy, it might be Q, but on this one, it's R. We're just one off.
Okay.
So the originals are, but the revised with your red lines are Q.
Just so that you understand my intent with this particular condition. So the plan, uh, so the idea would be to review the, how the sign is going to be lit and essentially the design of the sign, not the content of the sign, but just how it looks. Um, so that's kind of your, well, it's your advertisement from the street. So generally, that's one of the artistic pieces that a planning board would comment on. So because you don't know who your tenant is gonna be at this point, uh, it's clear to me that, uh, it is inappropriate to request this information at this time. And it's unclear when you will have a tenant. So that's why I, uh, put it as prior to issuance of an initial free scanning sign permit. So in most circumstances, it would be submitted as part of your site plan review application.
So were you concerned that content would be?
No, no, not at all on content. So again, we're, we're certainly fully willing to comply with, you know, the town's uh, bylaws and requirements. And what we have uh, gone through in multiple situations is a sign location would be, could be part of a site plan review if it's a freestanding sign. But other than that, usually it falls under the, the review of your um, building inspector with a sign permit. And that's what we understood was the, um, situation here, and that's what we were trying to recognize. Um, in terms of where a sign would be located and, and then in, in terms of the ultimate materials and lighting would all be compliant with the town's requirements from that point.
So I'm not thinking that this would be like a public hearing. It's just a matter of you submitting it, it being reviewed and administratively approved. So it wouldn't be any big, uh, approval process for you.
Uh, and, and it sounds like whenever any changes to the sign would go through that, that same process. And that, that's, that is creating a bit of a new review and approval. Is that not something? Like, I don't know the building inspector's process. If he gets a sign application in, does he generally circulate it to, to the other departments for review and confirmation or?
So it would be the initial sub mill. So generally, if, if the tenant changes, then the free scanning structure remains the same and they just change out the, uh, you know, maybe there's a logo, maybe there's, uh, the name of the company. So that changes and that would not, uh, require further review. Um, so it's pretty much just the, the aesthetics. So it's like the size and the lighting and the material and the design. So is it going to be, um, a wooden sign? Is it going to uh, be like a monument sign? Like what type of sign? Is it gonna have a stone base or? Like that, that is, uh, what I'm interested in having reviewed.
Sure. And all of those things, as you said, we don't know. We don't have a tenant or a user and, and are those things that, um, are typically uh, have been required? Is, is that required in the, in the, in the bylaw? That's, that's where we're getting to. I know there are other signs up and down the road for other facilities. Is that the process that they've gone through as well?
It's a rule and regulation. It's not in the zoning bylaw. It's in the rules and regulations.
Okay. So I, I would, uh, I, I, uh,
And this is a recent change.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, if I can just, um, address that point, since it's a recent change and I'd be interested in knowing Attorney Dinesky's position on it. But since.
I can't hear you. I don't, I don't know if it's just me, but I just can't hear.
Yeah, small fold.
It sounds like you said, you, you, we, we were wondering if Attorney Dinesky thought if that, if it were new, is it something applicable to this? Is that what you're saying?
I apologize. Um, yes, that was my, my question whether or not because my understanding is that the regulation was amended in December of twenty twenty-two. So would this project that was filed a couple of years ago be subject to the amended regulation?
Okay, so Attorney Dinesky, what, um, how do we handle that? If it's a newer rules and reg? Um, we're in a remand hearing. What does that look like?
Madam Chair, the zoning that applies to this remand hearing is that that was in place, uh, at the time of the original application. I don't know that this particular rule, uh, or regulation modification would not be applicable here. Uh, my sense is that it probably would be, but I will review that, you know, with the planner and we can provide a final determination. This does seem to me though, um, as was stated to be really an administrative process. So I'm not sure there's that much substantive, um, activity, if you will, for the sign permit to be issued.
So I mean, it sounds, it, in my view, it seems like maybe you're, the heart of what you're saying here is that you're afraid that you're gonna have to come back to the planning board for a year to review a sign. Is that kind of what your concern may be?
Yep, that's, that's certainly part of it. And creating a new requirement where one doesn't exist.
Okay, so why don't we look at, um, what are, what we're, what Lori's trying to accomplish to this, what you're trying to avoid? And what the true application is and whether.
Yeah, I, I do think that we, we'd be, you know, fully accept the idea that, you know, we're, and I think we made it maybe in comments or something, uh, which would be in the all caps again, but, uh, where we would, uh, accept complying with certainly the town bylaws and rules and regulations as they apply to the site. You know, we, we're certainly are amenable to that.
Okay.
So would you just be willing to submit it to me? And so when it goes to the entire board, it would just go to me.
And we can.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that as well, Lori.
And we would submit, uh, it, can we do it in concert with our process with the, you know, can we submit, when we submit for, uh, building permit, sign permit, that we can provide, uh, the planning department, the plant, town planner? Um, or Lori Connors, no matter where she is, um, a copy of our, uh, sign package? So that you don't elongate the process as well, where we have to go through one review and then another.
That's fine.
I can see the changed version, and I think they added that generally depicted on the reference sketch dated March seventeenth, provide a copy of the sign permit application to the planning director for review. So I think they already added it into the updated comment.
Well, the only thing that was deleted, and I don't know if this is maybe Lori's to consider, is just and subsequent major modification. So I think that's the piece we were questioning. Like if there's a new tenant or this, like what is that substantial modification? Or subsequent major modification? And how does, what does that look like if, as that sign changes?
So, so the way it's written, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Uh, the way it's written is that I would just get a copy of the, uh, sign permit application that's filed with the building inspector. So there would be no ability to comment. It would just be, I take the application and I put it in the file.
Okay, so we want a little more than that, but the point is just it's going to the planning director. Is that true? Lori, is that your preference? You wanna be a little.
Uh, that, that would be my preference.
Okay. So is that from the applicant's perspective, something we could somehow work out if it?
Yep, and I think subsequent, any subsequent modification is definitely gonna fall subject to your rules and regulations. So if anybody comes in and wants to take down the sign or double its size or whatever that is sometime in the future, those regulations that you, you mentioned, I, I have to admit, I haven't reviewed, you know, what you had from December. Uh, those regulations would apply at that, at that time.
Okay.
And I do think our sign bylaw says any major modification is a new sign, so they have to go back to Bob.
So that may be, yeah, maybe a moot point anyway.
Okay, the next one looked fine. Um, so this one was removed and I don't, was this from the fire chief? I don't know who's, who this gen- where this was generated from.
Yes, that came from the fire chief's, uh, standard comment letter.
Okay, so the applicant is concerned, um, you did not, um, agree with this one and just wondering what your thoughts are there.
Yeah, so we, it's not that we don't agree, it's that the plan is the approved plan. Um, and it shows the turning radii that meet these requirements. The grade doesn't exceed these numbers. And so if the plan is the approved plan, I, I, I presume you guys, nobody is looking for us to go and make the radius, turning radius at the driveway entrance to Bartlett Street any bigger to accommodate, you know, highway design standards, which is what Ashtoe typically, you know, concerns itself with. So, uh, I, I appreciate the, the fire department's comments, um. But we just, we didn't want to set up a potential conflict that somebody would say, well, that radius needs to be bigger to conform with Ashtoe, which Ashtoe again is very generic. There's different requirements for different, you know, categories of roads, highways, primary streets, local streets. No, I don't think they concern themselves with driveways or private sites. So.
It's my understanding that these are the standards that the fire department needs in order to get their truck down to the driveway. So that, uh, those are the, uh, angles that are appropriate for that particular fire truck.
Yep. And that's how the site's been laid out and reviewed. And I, I'm pretty sure David can chime in. We, we did a truck turning radius diagram and, and, and showed that it meets. And I, I, I think the thing, it is the same thing. The plan meets this requirement. The requirement is stated, but it, it sets up because the Ashtoe reference is not specific. It sets up, you know, some potential interpretation differences. Um, if, it's probably not an item that we're, if you guys really want to keep that in there, it's, we, we would love it to say as, you know, at the end as, as, you know, in, as shown on the approved plan or something like that. So that you erase the potential doubt.
I don't feel strongly about this one. Do any board members feel strongly, or Lori for that matter, based on what you, when you speak to the fire chief?
Well, I'm, didn't, didn't this come from the fire chief? Did I hear that correct?
Yeah.
So I think.
Do you feel strongly about that edit? Go, go ahead Fred. I see you've got something there.
To Scott's point, that those were the comments by the fire chief and the plan was designed in accordance with those comments. I think the, what, what practically will happen is at the end, they are required to provide an as-built plan. If at that time, the fire chief feels as though they did, they weren't met, we would work with them to make sure the as-built plan accommodates the, does actually meet the site plan that was approved. So unless there's some concern that the plan doesn't meet the requirement that the fire chief had, then it's, it should be fine to take that out.
Anthony, did you, does that satisfy what you're about to?
I just, I didn't know why, would we just not go back to the chief beforehand instead of doing it afterwards? Just to say, let him stamp his approval on that?
Um, so if, so.
We can, I'm sorry, Carrie. Uh, we can, we can check with the fire chief, but I believe that his very last comment letter was that he had no other comments on the plan that they had addressed his concerns, but we can go back and verify that, um, that they did sit, meet with him, they did satisfy.
Oops.
He did, I did speak to him already and, and he did just recently reissue his letter saying that he's satisfied.
Okay.
Then I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so that goes, um, prior to the issuance, um, of a certificate of completion, there is nothing to the conservation restriction, nothing for M W R A. Um, so this was a change from commercial vehicles to, um, delivery vans and trucks. So wondering your thoughts on what the thought is behind that?
Uh, anyone who drives a pickup truck is lay, maybe license plated as a commercial vehicle. Um, anyone with a, you know, personal van might, might also have that depending on what it is. So we wanted to be specific about the requirements here. And as we understand, it's not you know, there, there may be confusion on what is a commercial vehicle per those standards. So we, as we understand it, it's trucks and delivery vehicles that we wanna restrict.
More thoughts on that?
Sorry about that.
Well, that's okay, Fred. Lori, finish your sentence for you.
Perfect.
I just don't want, miss anything for the future too, like how they talk about it goes into the future. Um, like commercial vehicles covers everything. I don't know. I don't know.
There is also the possibility, like if you have a, a passenger, I, I'm sorry, a sedan and you, you know, you're a salesman for spring water, then technically your commercial vehicle, that your car. Um, so there are commercial vehicles that are cars, it would be captured by the original language. So I do agree with Scott on that.
So what did we put in our other decisions? Because this has gone in a couple of times now. Do we say, what do we say there? Have we been saying commercial vehicles this whole time?
I think.
I think it was trucks and you guys wanted to expand it, expand it to capture some of these other vehicles and.
Okay, so does delivery vans and trucks cover the sentiment of what we were trying to get at?
For me, it does.
It appears to. Yeah.
Here's still, we'll find out in the future.
Uh, maybe we even say, well, cause of this, I, I don't know, there's an and there. So I guess it would mean delivery trucks and, I'm sorry, delivery vans and delivery trucks just by nature of the and. So I don't know if we want to specify that any further or we're happy with delivery vans and trucks.
Well, either way you, uh, interpret that, that would not just, just be delivery trucks. It would be all trucks if you took delivery to modify only vans, right? If we're gonna play, uh, a little, uh, English, uh, word, word smithing here. So I think that's more encompassing if it's all trucks and delivery vans, not just delivery trucks.
Okay. Um, next one looked fine. Uh, the next one was in addition of stormwater. Um, that was a good catch, but then the question was, was this already completed? Um, so Fred, is this already completed?
I think that's, uh, actually my, my error. That's something, um, went after construction. You guys want, want the, uh, inspection report. Uh, I think we've done that at other, other sites, so I don't think that's completed because the sites aren't built yet.
The stormwater report is complete, but the inspection port, report after it's been in, uh, in constructed, needs to be submitted before they get their occupancy permit. Um, that's what I was looking for there.
Okay. So the next one looks like if I'm, yeah, so that was deleted. The next two are deleted. So that one says delete will provide some, uh, description as a part of building permit application in accordance with town bylaws. So does that map with the first one deleted or the second one deleted?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so let's take the second one first and then go back. Um. So is there, the difference then is we'll provide description as part of building permit application in accordance with town bylaws? Okay, so one thing here, um, Lori, I noticed that, um, I had submitted something different, but it didn't come through here. So I wanna go back to what I actually had intended for this. So I wanna go back to what I actually had intended for this, um. One second.
I think this one came from Amy.
Oh, okay, um. Okay, so.
I'll leave it to Carrie if she thought it came from her.
Let's see. So in this case, there was certain language that I didn't see in here at all, so actually I thought it was that one. So really, I was just trying to identify a way. So if there is something, that the tenant's different than, um, a traditional warehouse use, because that's what all the data was given. So when we got a traffic report, it was very clear, we went back and forth, like this is for a warehouse, it's not high cube, it's not parcel, it's not anything else. We're looking at these stats. So my point for this was to, if there's something different. Then we need to be able to reevaluate the project impacts, if for some reason it's high cube or whatever the case. I thought that's what you were trying to get back in that other one, um. So really, it was just related to any change in project impact. I'm gonna go back to the other one now, I just want everyone to see this part of it. Okay. Okay, so that's why I thought this was related to that, but it sounds like it may be a different issue. And then it sounds like, uh, on top of that, the applicant has, um, an, an edit to that, so. Let's untangle, how, is there a way where we can just have, uh, to use Anthony's word before, a mechanism where? If the, once we know the, I just wanna make sure, once we get a tenant, it's not something completely different than what we saw with completely different impacts. It, and, and that could just be even a surprise to, to you, that as the applicant. And so I'm not saying that's planned, but it could be a surprise to anybody, so. What is the mechanism to make sure the project isn't completely different than what we thought it would be?
When, when we submit for a, um. For a building permit for the ultimate tenant, because there will be work that needs to be done inside the building, specific to a specific user. When there's, when you go through that process, the building inspector has to make a determination. That the, the use complies with the permits. That, that we're in compliance, so that's why, you know, we deleted it and said there'll be a description of the use and the activity. As part of the building permit application, because that's required. And, um, again, when a, when that comes in, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the mechanism, but I believe. Lori and Fred, you guys would be, when the building inspector receives a. Uh, yeah, it's probably not for every internal build out, but, but I would assume that you guys would be aware of that.
Is that the case Lori, for you?
Maybe I, I missed something. Uh, we would be aware of what? I, I, like the floor plan when the building permit is issued, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, if.
We don't receive that, no.
Okay, so we would be amenable to a condition that, you know, for, that, that building permit application for the in. For the use of the in, in- interior, that would also be provided to the planning director. So that she is made aware and can make the determination of whether or not it's in compliance with the, with the permits. Namely this one and then. And to confirm that, you know, the use as described is, is in compliance with the expected use.
Okay, and then Lori, what happens if it's not?
Um. Well, since I don't have your floor plan to begin with, then, uh, how would I be able to determine that you're not in compliance? That, I think what this is saying is that, um. So the operational characteristics would have to do with. Isn't this mostly geared towards the traffic impacts?
Yeah, so for me, I, I don't know if you're asking me, but, um, so I'm thinking when we did all the traffic analysis, it was very specific. This is a warehouse, all the analysis was done on it being a warehouse, like it had a specific code. So I don't wanna then find out it's a totally different code and our traffic is actually this, not what we thought of you. So the impact is that much greater, because it's not that, whatever the code was in the transportation guidebook there. It's, it's something completely different, so that's what I'm just trying to avoid.
Yeah, was, it was evaluated as a warehouse. Yep.
So if it's anything but that, it changes the entire equa- oh, Amy, go ahead.
Um, when reviewing the Alston, um, warehouse, they actually had a condition. Where they included the ITE code number, so they said. The average daily trips are X amount under IET code one fifty. And the average daily truck trips are X. These average daily trips will be the maximum average daily trips. And funds will be provided to the town for enforcement of these trip numbers. But they had a condition where they actually listed the code and listed the trip numbers. And that might be helpful in our conditions, because. If we start talking about it, everybody's gonna say, okay, pull out the VHP traffic report, what date was that? It might be easier to have it in there, and I don't know if that helps with what you're talking about.
Really, did you have something there? Is that your handle?
Well, I guess that, I felt that the, um, item under W sort of addressed that with. The post occupancy traffic report. Which if it isn't the use that we intended, but it has a much different transportation, uh, element to it. That's when we would be looking at that and be able to hopefully manage that.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, if the application for the building permit or an occupancy permit. Comes in and is shared with the planning director or, and or others. You had asked what happens if what's represented in the application doesn't jive with what was approved. And the sort of more direct answer would be that the permit. Would be denied or should be denied, because the use is not approved. So I think the issue here is confirming that. Occupancy and or build out for a certain user is consistent with the scope of the approval and. Providing that the application documents are distributed to the appropriate personnel. The town would have that oversight opportunity.
Lori, you have some?
Yeah, uh, so the way it works is, uh, we get notified by the building inspector when somebody's ready for an occupancy permit. And that's our cue to go to the site and do an inspection, and of course, uh, you know, there's a number of items here that. Uh, Fred will be overseeing. So we go out and we, uh, count parking spaces and we look at trees and make sure that. There's the proper number and that the lighting is as it was supposed to be and that the building is as it's supposed to be. So it's very much a, uh, an exercise in ensuring that the conditions have been fulfilled. Uh, that the conditions, um, the physical conditions of the property. Comply with the approved plan, um, and of course, we look at the ASBIL plan for that, so. For our purposes, you know, the, what happens inside the building is irrelevant. Because it's not our jurisdiction, it's the building inspector's jurisdiction. Uh, for the interior of the building, so we're just looking at the exterior, so we're looking at the facade of the building. Um, but other than that, we're looking at, you know, driveway construction, berm, curb. Uh, w- walkways, ADA compliance, lighting and the like, so. You know, if the building's there, it doesn't matter so much whether it's generating. X number of vehicle trips or Y number of vehicle trips, like that's not part of the. Approval process from our end of things. It's not typical.
Well, then I guess that would be to Millie's point, that maybe that is where it comes in, in this post occupancy transportation monitoring, so.
Yeah, I suppose.
So we can delete this one and just, uh, go forward with number.
Well, so does it sound like this is already happening? Is that what you're saying Lori? This is pretty much already happening?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the intent of this condition is to get at the traffic impacts, then I think. W does a better job of doing that.
Okay, so actually then, I thought this was mine, Amy, this is actually your condition, what, what was, uh, your intent?
I think it came from another decision from another warehouse, like, because these warehouses are being built on spec. So I think they all have that condition in it, so I figured, well, maybe we should too, find out what's.
Okay, and the applicant is saying they'll provide a description as part of a building permit application in accordance with town bylaws. So, um, i- is it according to town bylaws, is this actually the way it would work or not?
Yeah, I think so, but I think in the other towns, the planning board wanted to know what the use was when it went in.
So right now, it's just a planning department, building inspector, so we would get to hear the use as well, I guess, is that what you're just trying to do, close the loop?
Yeah, I guess so, that's what other towns did for the spec buildings. I don't know.
Uh, I mean, overall, insignificant, um, from the applicant's standpoint, is there a reason why it does seem significant to you?
Sorry, um, I was trying to look up a, um, couple of the other conditions, um. Uh, could you repeat that, sorry?
Sure, that's okay, um, this would seem like it's insignificant, um, but for some reason you deleted it, so that would imply this. Seemed significant to you, so is there a reason?
Right, so, so we think it is part of the process when you go to the building department, that they, that you have to. Uh, submit your floor plans, which are very descriptive of what the use is gonna be inside, because you can tell. You know, whether it's storing materials or not, um, and then. As part of the building permit application, there's gotta be a description of what the proposed use is. You know, it'll probably, it should say warehouse. Now, um, we can include and maybe a bullet can be put up above. Under prior to the issuance of the building permit. Uh, uh, which is. Where you're, where you're looking for that requirement, I think it was up, uh, was it, uh? J or A or something, K. Um, you have a couple items down there that, that a, a copy of the building permit application. Including a description of the proposed use will be provided to the planning director, which I think says what you're saying down below and. And gives Lori a chance to weigh in and, and comment to the building inspector.
Sounds like it makes sense to me.
Uh, Lori, does that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay, great. Okay, so, um, I think we're gonna get back to this one, which is gonna be a tougher one, I think, so. This was just fully deleted, but no- nothing, um, specific, any, so obviously, this is something that's been a source of. Um, disagreement for the most part, uh, so you just don't wanna test period, nothing to do with this whatsoever.
So, uh, we are, you know, up above the under, uh, I forget what it was, I now forget whether it's D or E. Um, where we have a number of conditions, which include a, a, um. Uh, our, uh, submitting a, an analysis by an expert. You know, indicating that there's no impact on groundwater of our development, that we think that satisfies the condition. And if, in order to obtain that, you know, expert evaluation. They require additional testing or not, or i- it's leaving it in the hands of the expert. Which would be the, an LSP.
Okay, so which one, let's look at what you're referring to, and I think I missed.
And that, that's your, your condition, we didn't change that, and we think that that covers the issue, it's way up towards the beginning. There it is, uh, with the, uh, with the comment on it. Submit an analysis by a technically qualified expert, certifying that the quality and supply of the underlying groundwater resources will not be degraded to the point. Whereby a hazard to public health or ecological damage results.
So this one is typically, in my view, just geared towards the groundwater special permit, just to be sure that it was certified. Um, not like an additional, it's whatever you've already submitted. We just need the stamp of a qualified engineer, right? Fred, is that what that is, that piece of it? Or am I misunderstanding?
No, that's a, that's a requirement for the, uh, application for a special permit groundwater, is that a. Analysis by a technically qualified expert should accompany the application.
Okay, so that's just, you got a stamp on your, whatever you've submitted, has an engineer stamp on it, so that's not. Um, actually meeting, I think, the point of the other thing, unless you're suggesting a secondary. Analysis by an LSP, which.
Well, that, that says a technically qualified expert, the quality and supply of underlying groundwater resources will not be degraded. I, I think that's one in the same is what I was interpreting.
I mean, we, we could add language there to specify that. The qualified expert would be an LSP, if that helps.
Would they actually know about the CVOCs and know that that's?
They would have to, and, and, and LSP is required by, by the state to. To, and you guys probably already know this, is required by the state to operate, you know, pursuant to the requirements, yes, they would. They would need to do an adequate investigation to evaluate and make. You know, make the determination, so they can't just say, oh yeah, I looked at your plan and I'm good, and, you know.
Right.
They'd lose their license.
But if they said, would you submit to a test and you said no? They couldn't.
They wouldn't be able to write or provide the opinion.
Right, which is kind of what's happened on a couple of other properties, not yours, but.
Oh, okay, I'm like, not to my, no.
No, 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 not to yours, but to other properties, they.
We had LSP condition for two hundred Bartlett. I don't know what it is now off the top of my head, but maybe that would fit.
Um, Fred, it looks like you're looking at this one.
The, um, well, first Amy's comment about two hundred Bartlett Street had to do with the fact that there was. Uh, prior contamination that was being cleaned up at that site, and they had agreed to submit a report. From an LSP to confirm that the files were complete and the site was, had been cleaned to the, uh, appropriate standard for the DEP. It's a different case than this, there's not a, there's not a known, uh, contamination on this site that I'm aware of. This condition, the one that says submit an analysis by technically qualified expert, is a standard condition for, as a standard. Requirement for a project in the groundwater overlay district, and it, and it's usually stamped by the person who's done the. Uh, drainage analysis, they're considered a qualified expert, because they're, they're providing their expertise that. Anything that was on site in the building is properly contained and not able to get into the groundwater as part of the drainage system. The other condition about the. CO, CVOCs is different than this, uh, requirement for technically qualified expert.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I may, with the applicant's representation, that that analysis would be prepared by an LSP. In my view, that does require more than just a, a stamp. Uh, or, uh, a shorthanded, uh, one or two sentences, but. An actual analysis, taking into account the appropriate information.
Okay, so it's not something that's already transpired, this is an evaluation.
Uh, I am not reading it that way, and I, I'm not taking the applicant to represent it that way, and if I'm not. Taking it correctly, I'd ask the applicant to correct me.
Okay, so, um, what, what is the applicant saying here is, uh, a way to resolve this?
So, so, you know, given the differences in our understanding of the prior condition versus, uh, what we're talking about doing. We would be willing to provide to the town, um, you know, in, in LSP, uh, opinion. About the. acceptability of the development program as provo- as proposed, and that it would not result in any, what's the terminology?
Degradation.
Yeah, degradation or a hazard to public health or ecolog- ecological damage or anything like that, as a result in considering, you know, the the environmental status of the site. I I'm not wording it right, I would definitely have to rely on, you know, the town council or or certainly Kelly on our end, I'm sure it could help provide something that that we can, we can provide that opinion. And in order to get that opinion, we will do, you know, the the evaluation and research necessary, if it's if it requires above and beyond what we've already completed, that's what we'll have to do. If if what we have documented satisfies that requirement, then they'll be able to make the determination and they will have to stamp it. And again, their 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 license is is on the line on that.
Okay, does that make sense to board members?
Yes, Carrie, I have one question. So so what's the difference between what you're talking about having done and what Samborn Head already did?
So Samborn Head did a phase one environmental assessment, which is a a a usually, as you mentioned, I think previously, you know, a transactional protocol to investigate the conditions on and around the site. Based on that information, they would make a determination and provide a letter that's that provides their evaluation in consideration of the specific development program we have proposed, and whether or not there'll be a further degradation of environmental conditions or exposures on on the site. They'll make that evaluation, and if they believe it requires additional testing, then we'll be required to do additional testing. The whole, you know, MCP, Massachusetts contingency plan, and again, I I know, you know, certainly Kelly knows this better than I can explain it. The whole MCP is regulated and run through DEP and LSPs that are the licensed site professionals to oversee the appropriate process and execution of of those cleanups. They're obligated, if there things are found, they need to report it, there's a process, there's all the technical language that goes with it. This probably isn't new to most of you either. So they will determine what what needs to be done, if anything further, based on their standard review process and the requirements of the MCP.
Okay, I know, Jack, I see your hands up. I know you sent in a email to the board recently. I'm gonna allow you to talk here, so let's see. Hi, Jack. Oops, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, we, thank you.
Hi, John Wickstead, Two Sur, Brooklyn. You know, the the issue here is not to be, you know, overlooked. You're gonna be digging up an enormous pile of dirt. And these CVOCs, you know, get released into the atmosphere. We know this based on, you know, CVOCs, including TCE being found in the air of adjacent buildings. You know, this is a hazard to potential people working on the lot. You know, this is a giant warehouse, and all of those people in the hundred and fifty car parking lot who are working here are potentially exposed to these CVOCs and TCE if they're present in the ground and the building gets built there. And, you know, the whole neighborhood is gonna be exposed to these things if we're digging up fourteen acres of dirty dirt. So I think it's important that the presence or absence of the CVOCs, in particular, TCE, you know, be investigated prior to these guys digging up, you know, acres and acres and acres of dirt on this lot. You know, this is adjacent to Stirrup Brook. This is adjacent to residential neighborhoods. This is an area that's had multiple spills, including spills at, you know, two hundred Bartlett Street, right across the street from this. And this area is down gradient of those spills. And I think the company has an obligation to do some testing for these CVOCs, particularly in light of what we're learning about, you know, TCE in particular. I mean, this isn't just, you know, some random chemical. You know, the data suggests that there's a five hundred fold increase in the rate of Parkinson's disease with exposure of this stuff. So, you know, I recognize that the extent of the plume should have been delineated by the people who spilled it, but they haven't done it. And the people who own the lot have an obligation to test for these chemicals prior to exposing future occupants of the building and current residents of the neighborhood to these CVOCs. And I appreciate the planning board taking this as seriously as they are. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Oops, did I stop sharing? I'm sorry. Okay, so in in what we're talking about with the LSP, would they automatically test for CVOCs, or how do we know that that's actually what they test for? I think Scott, you made a comment that if they're testing it, they're obviously gonna look for that because it's part, they get the report, they look at it, they're gonna see that, so.
Right, so I and I'm not, I appreciate the comments of Mr. Wickstead, and I share the concern that we need to be appropriate, take appropriate safe measures, and we will follow the Massachusetts contingency plan, the MCP, and its requirements. And those are dictated by the LSP. Did the LSP perform, Samborn Head performed the initial evaluation? And it noted, as you mentioned, the the spill situations out on, I believe, most significant at Hayes Memorial Drive in Marlboro. And the concerns, this area of the site frankly is not down gradient of that property. There are portions of this land that are in the wetlands that are closer to it. You know, further, further away from where we're building, but that's an evaluation and it, I'm not what we're committing to is follow the state MCP and the LSP recommendations. And I don't know that that would require any additional testing or a ton of additional testing. The requirements and and be be safe. We have developed multiple contaminated sites by prior prior owners. Fortunately, we have not been involved with any contamination of our own responsibility. And we have been involved in multiple cleanups, and we will follow the appropriate safe requirements as as dictated by the MCP.
Okay, board members, thoughts on that?
I don't know enough about the MCP, but is it something like the Board of Health and Town Council can agree, you know, give us advice if this is the proper way to go? I mean, it sounds better than it did last time that there will be an LSP involved. I didn't know there was gonna be before.
Yeah, I liked how you stated it before, Scott. I only wrote down little bits and pieces of it, but it you lay kind of laid it out in a way that if the LSP does the analysis, it may require nothing, but it may require additional research, and if that's the case, that's what will, that's the course it'll take. So I guess it kind of is depending on what comes back, but there will be an LSP involved to evaluate it, I guess, the.
Yeah, and I think the the component in here that we're willing to commit to, and we thought the language above already referenced, was that we will provide an opinion from an LSP indicating that the activities are, you know, are are will not degrade or degrade the the groundwater or soil or present a, you know, I don't know the correct terms, you know, and a a, you know, dangerous situation, or whatever the the right language is, because I'm not, I'm not using it, and they they know all the language. And, you know, if that means we have to test further and we would have to somehow do some sort of mitigation activities, then that's what we would have to do.
But the LSP know if it needs to trigger the phase two study? Like, a phase one study has been done. A lot of times, it's a phase two study is triggered.
So to be clear, the the group Samborn Head carried out and completed the phase one, and they are that is an LSP organization. I think the both the parties who signed it are probably LSPs. And they follow a very specific protocol. And when we, if we go and ask them to, well, can you give us a letter that says we're not gonna do anything to harm or degrade or 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 endanger, you know, people, then they're gonna tell us what they need to do to make that determination.
You said that you guys won't do anything to harm or degrade, which I'm sure you won't. But, well, I'm not sure, but I know you'll try not to. But what about what's already there? Like, that would be harmful.
Well, that that that's part of it, because it is part of it, they know we're gonna, you know, move dirt around and 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 that's part of the the activities they need to evaluate.
We asked that a separate LSP other than Samboard Head do the evaluation, just so we get a third party?
I don't, I don't know, does that matter or not matter?
Really shouldn't.
Because Samboard Head found something, right? And and, you know, but they said you don't need to go any further. I'd like to get a second opinion.
Yeah, I don't know that they said you don't need to go any further. It's just that the the laws didn't require you to go further. I don't, there's a difference between a recommendation and a requirement. And there there were some known wrecks found on the property. It just didn't.
Yeah, and and just to be clear, there there is there there were historical activities that were referenced, and there was one wreck, recognized environmental concern as a wreck. And that one wreck was offsite to the east, not on our property. They recognized that was a spill off property and said, this is something you should be aware of. So that initial phase one evaluation is just that, it it identifies everything that you, they, us, we should be aware of. And, you know, certainly, Mr. Wickstead is saying here's something to be aware of and be concerned about, and we need to put the two together. Here are the concerns that were raised in the phase one. Here's our plan of what we want to do. Do the two together create any issues of concern?
Okay, what about based on what we've talked about, we try to put some language together there to to see what that looks like? And then I wanna query everybody at this point. We we still have quite a bit to go through. Do we wanna forge through or come back and look again? How's everybody operating? It does look like there's a few more changes, yeah. How's the, how's the applicant feeling? Do you wanna forge through? Do you need to?
We we are definitely interested in trying to get to a conclusion as quickly as we can. So at the indulgence of the board, we're we're ready to keep going.
Board members, how you doing?
It's it's fine tonight, but I'm going to work tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning. Lori, how are you doing?
Tired, but at your pleasure, whatever you folks wanna do.
I say we go to eleven fifteen. All right, we will, we're gonna, we'll go to eleven fifteen, and then we just need, well, we had to make sure to, we account for public comments.
So to move beyond this one, as we mentioned, you know, we we can submit a proposed language on this, and Lori and you and attorney Dinesky can look at that and and put it in front of the board.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's move past that then. It sounds like we're getting closer anyway on a good solution there. We've figured out the next one already. The ASBIL plan has, let's see, the changes were pretty minor. I guess, Fred, I would defer to you a little bit here on these changes that were made. This is the original, by the way, you're looking at. So the changes were, let's see, the professional engineer shall provide a letter cert- certifying that the drainage system was built substantially in accordance with the approved plans. So the sentence that changed, let's see, is this one? Right? Nope, did I get that right? Yes, that's the sentence I believe that changed. Do you have the red line version?
Are you asking Fred?
Oh, yes, I am. Sorry, Fred.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm actually having a hard time following along because I I don't see that on the, on the plan that I, on the copy I have that stated applicant's comments from three sixteen, I don't see it.
Okay, so hold on, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second and go over to the red lines.
On the, on our comment document, I think it's item U, and it's the last bullet. Is that correct? That's where we are?
Yes, it's above.
Hold on, I have it here. Okay. Okay, so right here, Fred, is the change.
Okay, so. So it's a
Item T.
It it's, it's fine, it's, my goal in in the requirement of the ASBIL is that the engineer goes back, reruns the stormwater analysis to see that the basin that was built actually operates in accordance with his design, however you want to word it. He he needs to certify that he's, the survey shows the volume in the basin and that the outlets of the basin are appropriate as designed. It may be, it may be built exactly. What happens is the basin ends up being somewhat more curved, and so they need to calculate the volume in the basin at the different elevations of the outlet pipes. And I just need him to certify that he's done that, and that the volume is that storage that was required is actually what was built. So it's the language that you have doesn't really affect what he needs to do in order to get me to sign off on the ASBIL plan. However you want to word it, it's fine. As long as David knows, and if it's not David, whoever, knows that they're basically running the entire analysis again through the ASBIL detention basin to con- to be able to say that no more water was leaving the site than was originally proposed to, and that the basin is is built substantially in accordance with that plan or design, however you want to word it. That seem clear enough or not?
That current edit, does that satisfy what your concern was? Does?
It does. In the end, I will get the analysis, and I will tell them if I approve it or I don't approve it, and then we'll go back and forth at that point regardless of whether it says approved plans or approved drainage system. It's gonna be he's gonna need to, he's gonna need to do what I am looking for in order to get me to sign off.
Okay, so I see you removed a drainage system and put it in approved plans. Any reason behind that, or you just wanted to?
We were, we were just trying to clarify the language, yeah. Yeah, and I think the key point that per per Fred's comment is and will perform as designed at the end there. And that's what you're saying, Fred, and we've gone through it on other projects. I'm David's familiar with it. He knows what he needs. And that's what you're saying Fred. And we've gone through it on other projects. I'm David, familiar with it. He knows what he needs to do.
Yep.
And we know that if the basin, you know, the practical, effort of constructing, uh, of construction, there will be some minor variation between the lines, drawn on the piece of paper and what ends up out in the field in terms of grading. And we survey that and, and David will run the analysis and provide it.
Thing, things happen. You hit ledge in one corner and the basin has a different shape. And therefore the volume's not exactly as originally designed unless you survey it and run the water, uh, run the hydraulic models, uh, to determine that the amount of water leaving the site is what you had planned it to be. So, I, I fully expect that it won't be a problem with it. And it's something that I, I will look at and determine when they submit the ASBilt plan, if it's, if it's adequate or not. And if not, then, we have in the past had people rerun the models or make some modifications in order to get there. Um, so, uh, I'm comfortable with the language being modified. It doesn't eliminate what I intend to, to look at and review.
Okay, board members, any concerns? Nope, okay. It looks like nothing changed for the next one. Um, so this is, oh sure.
Did we miss the EV charging one? It was above it. They changed it to install necessary conduit.
That's the next one.
Oh, I, I have it above.
Oh, sorry. Oh, no, because they added it. So, so this is just to be clear. So they deleted it here, and then added it in the red line version. So now in the red line version, instead it says, install necessary conduit to make at least three parking spaces ready for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations.
Yep.
Okay, does that work for everyone?
Yeah, so we had had a discussion on whether it's just conduit or, actually installing the charging stations or can you install the conduit and the electricity while you're running electricity?
You won't be able to install the electric lines because you can't have them just sitting there unconnected. So you pull the wire when you have the, uh, when you have the, uh, um, actual chargers put in place.
I have it pulled from my house to my pool and it's capped off just in case you ever wanted to add something. So I was wondering if the charging station could do that. They pulled the wires and then it's in a little thing that's capped off.
Uh, we probably wouldn't want to leave the wires just capped off. But the conduit and the station, I mean, pulling the wire is not the biggest, you know, component of it. Uh, and frankly, it's not, it's, it's more of a, practical leaving a wire there because frankly, depending on the use of it, you know, somebody might come in and say, well, we want to pull a different size wire or whatever, who knows? So we, we typically wouldn't. Um, but having the conduit there is usually the bigger challenge because you need to have the root.
Okay, does that work for everybody as written?
Yeah, having the conduit makes much more, much, that is, he's right. That, that is the harder part of that. And actually it leaves it sort of future proof because if they come out with chargers that are higher voltage than what they have now, we can pull that higher voltage cable at that time.
Okay. Um, the next one looks like, um, a couple of edits here. The only thing, so all right, so there's a couple. One is changing the percentage. The next is just making sure that's not any offsite mitigation. Did anyone see anything substantially ever said? So the percentage was one I wanted to focus on from my perspective. I don't know if other board members have anything else?
Well, there was that one part I brought up where you actually list the numbers like IETF code one fifty. These are the average daily trips that were, we were given. And should they go above these numbers? So I guess what they were doing in Halston, it wasn't even twenty, ten or twenty-five percent. It was if you go over the numbers that were given in the traffic study.
Okay, so there's one option, which is exact number. So there's that. Then there's a lower percentage. So the reason, I personally gravitate to ten is because, um, that's what a, a lot of other communities in the same situation had put it closer to ten. Um, the applicant had here twenty-five. So I guess we gotta think like there's a couple of different ways we can go on this one. Any thoughts? Um, from board members on this? Well, I do think that twenty-five is a hot, is, um, on the high side to trigger something. But I also think that, that ten percent's a little bit on the low side.
Yeah, I might.
I, I agree with Billy. Yeah, I, I think going somewhere in the middle in between those two.
Anthony, you were gonna say something there?
No, I was just gonna say I agree with that.
Okay, so it sounds like we're not looking to make it exact to the, um, transportation numbers. Although it's not a bad idea, Amy. Um, but I do wonder if, by way of tying it to the original traffic plan, if that actually accomplishes that.
It does. I think it would just someone would have to go back and look up all the numbers.
Oh, right, this, the, yeah. We can still put the numbers, but then just also have a percent. So rather than have a maximum of the, whatever it is. Yeah, you can, you can state the numbers in there, but at the same time say if it's above, you know, if it goes, I don't know, twenty percent, higher, then we need to have some re-evaluation of the use or the, this traffic study.
According to the VHB memo of eight seventeen twenty twenty, they stated the warehouse would be an ITE one fifty, with forty-three morning peak trips and forty-six evening peak trips with a total of two hundred and eighty-four daily trips. So I actually found them, but someone can double check.
Okay, so from the board's perspective, it's actually putting in that data, just to be clear in what data we're referencing, and then negotiating the percentage. Um, from the applicant perspective, what is your, um, goal for the, what would be your goal?
Well, uh, it's one in the same. If you guys want to list the numbers in here, I think you're just bogging down the decision with a lot of information that, is available presumably. Um, and it's, well, that's fine. Um, you want to put in the numbers, it's, it's the same thing. We're referencing the same thing through the memo versus putting the numbers in. It really, doesn't change the perspective of, uh, from our, our point of view.
Okay, percentage wise, um, you're, you're twenty-five, we're ten. The board's feeling like one's too high, one's too low. What? What feels?
So I think that, that the twenty-five percent, I, I think is, more in, in our opinion and in full, um, uh, transparent honesty. I am a traffic transportation engineer. Um, so I used to come before this board as a, traffic engineer and in years prior. Um, so, uh, the, the numbers that you get will vary on a day-to-day basis easily, beyond ten percent. The number of people who are going in and out of the school, going in, you know, you, you're, you're going to work, you know, one day, but the next day you got a doctor's appointment. Thing, things change and vary day to day. So, you know, ten percent, I agree is, is too low. Plus, we used to do and, um, we, we would very often round the numbers. So you referenced, I, I didn't get all the numbers. I don't know, forty-three and forty-six. We would almost always round the numbers up to the nearest five, you know, call forty-three, forty-five. Simply because the, when we did traffic studies and evaluations, we would rather in the evaluation air on the conservative side, make sure you do the analysis with a higher number, than what you usually expect. Um, it doesn't appear that they did it on, on this particular effort, but, um, you know, the, we think twenty-five percent is the right number because you're gonna have easily a ten to twenty percent swing day to day and just, traffic, normal traffic variations. And even more so now in this day and age with, post-COVID and do people work Mondays and Fridays and all sorts of stuff like that. So you're gonna have a lot of variation anyway. Um, so we do think twenty-five's the right number because of that normal variation. And what you're really looking for is if something is a problem. And, and that's why we think the twenty-five percent makes sense.
Um, Laurie, do you have any experience with this in other towns or?
Um, I did actually get, uh, quite a significant amount of this condition from the town of Sutton. And they use twenty-five percent. So that was for a million square foot warehouse. So I, I do agree with Scott that there are huge fluctuations and in, traffic on a day-to-day basis, uh, just, from, uh, you know, just seeing the, uh, occupancy even in the town hall parking lot. So.
On the flip side, I always had a problem with the original analysis. I think we only actually got one day. Uh, it was like October nineteenth, something random within our first review of this. Like, so, I, I think the board always had an issue at the time with the traffic analysis. So I hate to like, double up, like double the consequence because if, if the original we had problems with, and then we give like a, a healthy leeway of twenty-five percent beyond that to account for, um, fluctuations, but I don't feel like the fluctuations were really accounted for the first one, what the report's based on. It makes me a little nervous to give like double, um.
So, so just to clarify, and again, uh, not, not to geek out too much on you here. The, the fluctuation or the, the, the change from day to day that you're talking about, they didn't do, all sorts of different days of analysis. I'm, I'm sure usually in order to get one day of analysis, they actually had to count, a little bit more. It might've been almost two days by the time they start and the end, but that, that's besides the point. That, that variation is not in the projected numbers, the forty-three, forty-six, two hundred. Those are the prescribed numbers again by ITE. So those are not variable. And it, it is a little bit of a catch twenty-two in the traffic world. If they happen to have counted a lower day, and got traffic conditions that maybe weren't as high as another day might be, then the relative impact of the proposed project is higher. Cause you're starting from a lower condition. So you, you actually, you know, it, it, you think, oh, maybe they counted a, a particularly good day or something or low day. Then the relative impact of the project would be a larger percentage of that number. Whereas if they counted a higher day, the relative impact is somewhat diminished. And, and usually your day, as long as, and I'm sure they did this, as long as they're counting a midweek day, it's probably representative because when you get to a larger, um, uh, perspective like the amount of traffic on a road as opposed to one particular property or site, um, some of those variations start to change because this, this group is not as high and that group is, is higher. So it starts to balance out and you see the patterns, uh, come through on a, on an overall roadway like a Bartlett Street.
So, okay, then I hear what you're saying there. Um, Laurie, CMR PC, when they did our post audit, um, did they have a certain percent? I'm wondering if our RPA actually had a recommendation for us.
But I believe I have that report, so let me see if I can, find it.
I don't know, any other board thoughts there? I think just going back to the original, um, problems we had with, with the interpretation of the traffic study was that, um, they used really two different, uh, data points from ITE, edition number nine, and they also used edition number ten, depending on what I think numbers, would be reflective of maybe something, uh, more, um, or, or less impactful. I'm not quite sure. But also that it was really only under the warehouse use and really this, doesn't seem to be as designed as just such. Okay, so I think we have to think through this one a little bit more. I just want to see if we can get a little further. Coming back to that.
I'll see where they're really talking about, uh, percent variances.
They are or not?
They are not, not in this report.
Uh, so the next one, uh, we can come back to that. I don't want to get stuck on it. I want to see if we can get as far as we can. Um, the, this was deleted as a duplicate, the next one, but it actually was not a duplicate. So this, the, the previous one, I think that was perceived to be a duplicate was about the sign. But this is actually, um, prohibiting the traffic from turning right on the Bartlett Street. Maybe this part could somewhat be duplicative. Although not really, it's more about education versus signage. So, thoughts on this one? Did you just mistake it as a duplicate?
Uh, I'm not sure, uh, I, so what else are you asking for?
So this is an actual, the, well, we could change it to the match the same language, whether it's delivery vans and trucks, are prohibited from turning right. So previously, I think it was more about, um, the sign, the signage there, but this is that they're prohibited from turning right.
So. Uh, okay.
When I actually read the traffic report again last night, um, one of the comments was prohibiting them from turning right would actually help the intersection of Lyman and Bartlett too.
Oh, that's the CMR PC.
Uh, no, it was actually the BHP.
Right, you'd have fewer vehicles going in that direction.
To me is, uh, important.
I'm just wondering if we could add something to the, I, I, I understand we're talking about prohibiting, um, and I'm just, trying to understand in order to prohibit, we will, you know, install signage and can, you know, um, you know, direct, um, users and inform all users and drivers of the requirement. I'm trying to see what else, you're looking for, asking. I, I, you know, if somebody does something they're not supposed to do, um, which can happen, I'm sure, you know, there are signs out there and you guys probably still hear about trucks that go the wrong way, right?
So the reason for us getting so like one level beyond that is because we actually had a problem. So other warehouses in the area do have this, but for the ones that don't, we constantly, where they just do a sign and instruction. We have a problem of being able to even enforce that. We have nothing to go back to the decision and say, your decision says you can't do that. So, there's nothing really for our zoning enforcement officer to use. So this is just a way for him or if it's a woman to point to, um, as a condition of the, um, plan. That's why we go a level down on this one.
All right, uh, I understand your intent there. Let us, uh, think about, that component and maybe we can keep going.
Yeah, um, so just so, for, for me, this is a non-negotiable one. Like I don't, that's prohibiting the turn on right on Bartlett Street. Is one of my top like not, we're not willing to budge. So just so you, when you're thinking about it, I don't know if that's the perspective of anyone else on the board, but that's a big one of mine.
I agree with that.
Mine as well.
All right, so that's, that's a biggie. Um, okay, we're almost nearing the end here. Um, I thought the next one, trucks, the addition here was not associated with the property. Did anyone have an issue with that one?
Next one, AA is included in the top, what I already talked about.
Okay, so does this come up entirely?
That can come out entirely. It was already covered.
Okay.
I mean, leave the maximum feasible part of it that they didn't cross out. But the part that's crossed out can come out.
I've got it, okay, yep, so all of this comes out.
Yep.
Yep, and that's reflected in the revised. Um, okay, why don't we, I do need to be able to take public comments, so why don't we, if there are any public comments at this time from anyone, hold on, I'm gonna stop sharing. Um Jack, I don't know if you have another public comment, you just can put your hair down, hand down, someone will let you talk. Hi, Jack, did you have another?
Can you hear me? Yeah, I just have a couple of quick comments, I I I won't keep everybody out late past eleven fifteen. Um John Wick's had two stir up Brook Lane, I I've wanted to just ask a question, first of all, um. I think the property's on sewer, right? So presumably the sewer line's gonna extend. As we've all talked about, very close to the residential neighborhood here. Is that sewer line large enough to be used by? You know, the town going forward if it expands sewer up Bartlett Street?
That's a good question, Fred, do you know that?
I mean, if we're gonna go to the trouble of digging up the road to put a sewer line in all the way down there. Like, it wouldn't be a stretch to just push it a little further and I'm just, you know, it should be sized appropriately for that.
The applicant is proposing a forced main uh with a pump station on their site and lifting it up to the manhole up the street. Where it goes gravity, so um. There's no way to extend it to the north or towards the residential neighborhood without another pump station lifting it up and into there, so. It's not really, uh it's not as if they're extending a gravity line that could easily be extended, so I don't see that being an an option.
Okay, yeah, I don't know anything about sewers, so thank you. Um I'll I'll keep my comments brief, you've heard most of them, I I think the language on on the things that you've gone over is gonna be particularly critical. Um the idea of the berm and the fence. Um you know, lots of discussion around that and I think. There should just be, you know, relatively simple, straightforward, the combination of the berm and the fence. Should not be less than, you know, fifteen feet high or fourteen feet high or whatever it is that you determine. Um you know, noise is a point phenomenon. And if you stand on one side of your lawn, you can look over your six foot fence and into your neighbor's, you know, second floor. And we have that same problem here, the houses are all well above this parking lot. And if the fence is not sufficiently high. It will have no impact on the noise and it's really the noise issue that's the problem here. You know, cars that park right against the fence aren't gonna put their headlights. Into the houses, right, they're parking right against a fence. But plows on the other side of the parking lot are gonna make a hell of a lot of noise and it's gonna go right over your little six foot stockade fence. So I would, I would ask that you continue to be respectful of the neighbors. And consider a combination of berm and fence not to be less than, you know, a sufficiently high height that will actually have some effect. Um I I think my second comment here on building color, I think what you guys want are earth tones. I'm not much on colors myself, but yeah, that may be uh what you were looking for. The idea that you won't see this building from stirrup Brook Trail is ludicrous. You know, if you walk on the borough's loop trail now, you know, the borough's loop trail goes thirty miles around the whole boroughs, right, and stirrup Brook is part of the borough's loop trail. And if you walk on that by the high school, you can see the other Gattir's building. You know, across the swamp. And you know, it's it's probably a quarter of a mile away and the thing sticks out like a store, a sore thumb. So you know, I think getting the colors right on that are particularly important. Um I would say as my last comment, the um traffic that you were just recently discussing. A post occupancy. Study is not the time to find out that they've decided to use this as a last mile warehouse. Right, so the language in there to make sure that the planner can review the use of the building. Prior to issuing an occupancy permit is particularly germane. Um I, you know, the enforcement that we have here is a twenty thousand dollar bill. And that's basically, you know, twenty thousand dollar get out of jail free card. You know, all it says is they will provide mitigation, but if they've. You know, decided to use the warehouse for something other than what they've originally decided. You know, a twenty thousand dollar bill isn't gonna stop them. So I I would be very careful about the language on both of those points. Uh issuing the occupancy permit as well as enforcement on the post occupancy traffic study, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I don't see any other public comments at this time, um for emails that have come in at this time, I think. Laurie, did we have anything else come in, I saw it, um John Wick's dead sent a lengthy email about TCE and groundwater, just some of what he talked about. Tonight about the dangers of TCE. And um just making sure there's further testing there. I don't see any other emails that we've received since the last hearing, do you have anything, Laurie, on your side?
No, that's the only uh about our email I received.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, I have um. Oh, I guess. Maybe for next time, we have a couple, we have Manny. Um Lope sent something in. About noise and traffic, I I'm sure the board has, I'm just seeing it now because I'm checking email for um. The purpose of public comments, but I think the board probably hasn't had a chance to read the last couple that came in tonight, so we'll look at those for next time. And then we don't have too much more to go through, I think, um we got, we made some good progress overall, um. I think at this point, we're gonna have to continue. We'll be fading soon and we still have to close up our meeting. So why don't we um. Continue to the fourth.
Gary, I am not gonna be able to be there before, so I don't know if that changes anything or. I need to be there, I could do, maybe.
Yes, you did a vote. We have other options that week, Laurie?
That the entire weekend, I gotta.